Then that's everybody.
Other than that, we have work, we're good then to proceed?
Yes, we have eight members. We are.
Excellent. Okay, I'm gonna, I'll read us in then. Okie dokie. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a listing of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022 at 7:30 PM via the Zoom virtual platform. Due to the COVID-19 virus, Melbourne Town Hall is closed to the public for the purpose of the planning board meeting. Meaning notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform by both audio and video means. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. This notice was posted on the Melbourne Town Hall website, Melbourne Town Hall Bulletin Board and Melbourne Town Hall front door roll call.
Diane Egglow?
Here.
Yes, Don Halper?
Here.
Mark Mattson?
Here.
Maggie Miggins?
Here.
SuJapha Sean?
Here.
Deborah Nevis?
Here.
Vice Chair Daniel Bear?
Here.
Chair Beth Saul?
Here, thank you. Our first item of business is approval of the minutes from January 19th, 2022. And open it up if anybody had questions or corrections regarding the minutes of January 19th. I mean, could you, would you mind reading back who was in attendance so we know who can nominate?
Was everyone with the exception of Deborah?
Great, anybody move to approve the minutes of January 19th?
No moved.
You, and a second?
A second.
You, all in favor? I?
Hi.
Opposed? And we'll note that Miss Nevis will recuse as she was not in attendance. Okay, our next item is the memorialization of application 21007. I'm gonna close my door, hang on one minute.
Somebody's not happy.
At time, fun. Um, I had a few minor corrections myself and Ed, I'm sorry for not getting into you sooner.
No problem.
Um, two on the second page, line 52 is the first one, let me know when you get there.
Hey, I'm there.
Okay, instead of block 80 in line 52, it should read block 801.
All right.
And then in line 57, after the word steep slopes, it should just be a comma, not a period.
Yes, I see that, thank you.
You're welcome, and I think there's one a little later. Where did it go? I should have dogged it, okay. Um, oh, I just, it's the way it appeared on my paper. It's page 15 or line 374.
Uh, all right.
And it says, in support of the aforementioned design waiver, and then it's like, oh, a very bold underlined comma on my, on my printout.
Yeah, it came out that way on mine, I'll check it on the computer and see what happens.
That was the only other question I had, everything else was fine for me, thanks.
Um, I had one other, I'm sorry, I had one other change that Ms. Miggins had raised, and that is in line 472.
Mm-hmm.
The conditions that we had imposed, she suggested, and I'm sorry, Mayor, if I'm preempting you here.
Oh gosh.
That we delete the words fixtures and accessories because there really is no definition for those things, and that may be in the mind of the beholder. So, we would delete those words and it would read similar to what we've done before. There shall be no storage of any item other than patio slash outdoor furniture on the residential balconies.
Great, thank you for that correction.
Um, Ed, I had just, um, on page nine, number 15, you have Richard Keller P E P E. And we just need to change one of them to P P. And you have a couple spots where you have him also listed as a PLS, which I'm told he is not.
Um, okay, I will global that and make those corrections.
Okay.
Thank you, any additional corrections? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution with those corrections as noted at this meeting. Give it a second.
Second.
Diane?
Yes, Don Halper?
Yes.
Mark Mattson?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
SuJapha Sean?
Yes.
Diane Egglow?
Yes.
Deborah Nevis?
Yes.
Daniel Bear? Beth Saul?
Yes. Great, thank you, approved memorialization for application 21007. I'm gonna move on into our new applications tonight. So, we have the order as 21008 to be first, is that, I mean, I don't know if it was just because it was numerical or because the intention, I know that, I believe Beehive had been intending to be earlier, but then was moved, is that?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I had already had Stone Mountain was already on the agenda, went before Beehive got carried, that's your call, you know?
Um, Ed, a recommendation? Should we?
Um, I, I really don't have one, I mean, I know what Eileen is saying, she's correct, this, this spot was sort of reserved, and, uh, you know, I'm not sure it's fair to this applicant, um, you know, to bump them back. On the other hand, yeah, you know, Beehive should have been heard before and there was a notice issue, and, uh, you know, it's, uh, I, you know, I suppose, again, this is the, I agree, it's the board's call, but.
I understand, yeah.
In the same sequence that we were in before, you know, and, and move them in that direction.
Okay.
First.
And I'm comfortable after having your review, so are you also leaning towards having the Stone Mountain continue first?
No, I was going the other way. I was moving the other way, but that's up to, that's up to the board.
That's fine, uh, may I ask my vice chair, may I put you on the spot, Dan, do you have a, an opinion regarding the order, and I apologize for doing this in the, in the meeting?
My preference, uh, let's just do it numerically and go, okay? They, they had, they're on, they're on the agenda, and the other one got moved, so why don't we just do that?
Great, thank you, and then per my review, I think I'm happy to do that. So let's continue within the order as listed on the agenda, 21008 Stone Mountain Associates, so if you'd like to bring in there, at least they're comfortable and we can add witnesses as needed. Uh, good evening, Mr. Lane?
Yes, good evening, how are you? Can you hear me?
Well, thank you, we can, we can see you and hear you, thank you.
Very good.
Is there anyone else that I need to bring over, other than?
Yes.
Anthony?
We have.
Who else would you like?
Uh.
As a panelist for the.
Okay, in addition to engineer Anthony Ficino, we have Seon Bernie, the principal, a longtime resident of Short Hills. And we have a solar array specialist by the name of Jeff Chafkin.
Hey, I think we're bringing those folks in, and if you would like to begin.
Sure, thank you very much for this opportunity to present this application. Stone Mountain Associates is a principal-owned business property located at 830 Morris Turnpike in Short Hills. It's approximately 85,000 square feet with details of parking and alike that can be best addressed by our engineer. This is a, an application for installation of a solar array that our engineer can describe in greater detail. So, without any further ado, I'd like to ask our engineer, Anthony Ficino from KC and Keller to discuss the details.
Hey, we'll have you corner, thank you.
If you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, done by the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you would just state your name, spell your name for the record, please.
Sure, Anthony Ficino, F as in Frank, A C C H I N O. I, my business address is 258 Main Street, Melbourne, 07041.
And Mr. Lane, will you bring Mr. Ficino through his credentials?
Uh, you know, I actually asked him if I could do that, he said he is actually more comfortable describing his own.
I apologize, okie dokie.
No problem, yes, I, I apologize. So I studied at Stevens Institute of Technology, I, where I graduated in 1998. I hold a professional engineering license since 2003. I also hold a professional planner's license since 2006. All my licenses are current. I've been a senior project manager here at KC and Keller for a little over a year. Prior to this, I was with a larger firm for 22 years, doing very similar site plan designs of this magnitude and considerably larger. I have testified before many boards in New Jersey, just to name a few, South Orange, Montclair, Newark, Glen Ridge, Hanover Township, just to mention a few.
Thanks, and we're hearing you tonight as a, as an engineer or engineer and planner?
Engineer, I would be doing the engineering as well as the planning testimony as well.
Okay, thank you, we will accept you as a expert in the field of planning and engineering.
Great. Um. And did you want me to just start with the exhibits that I'm gonna be presenting this evening and take it away?
Yeah, I, I, my experience, lawyers get in the way of engineering, so.
Okay. I am going, I am going to say this though, um, while I, I'm not here to defend the lawyers necessarily, I am gonna ask Mr. Lane to make sure that the testimony is focused on, not only the application, but when we get to the variances in waivers, we need to take each of those one at a time, and we need to describe the proofs for each of them, as opposed to just having the engineer who knows the project, go on and describe all of these different things without bringing them into the context of the proof levels that need to be brought. So with that, Mr. Lane, let me pass back to you.
All right, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with Mr. Ficino addressing those points, if there's something lacking or additional clarification is required, we'll be happy to support whatever information is required.
Thank you. Okay.
Great, and Mr. Ficino, as you move through, if you're planning to share your screen, we will ask that we number exhibits, even if they have markings on them, and we will begin with A1 and go from there numerically as you proceed, so please take a moment at the beginning of each exhibit to name it and label it.
Great, okay, I'm gonna share screen.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bear has a comment or question?
Just wanna interject, this is a major site plan, correct? So we are asking, so EIS is required for a major site plan, and they're asking for waivers, so should we deal with that prior to testimony?
Sure.
Yeah, let's do that.
Oh, okay, yeah, so we are asking for a waiver from the environmental impact statement. This site is, in my opinion, fully developed, there are no wetlands located on site, there are some steep slopes, which we are, we are going to be disturbing, but only because there is a deteriorating retaining wall that's in need of replacement. Other than that, there really is no environmental issues with this site.
If you could just clarify, you said there is a disturbance of deep slope on the site?
Yeah, well, there, there, there will be, there's an, when I get into, I guess, when I, would I've gotten into my testimony, but existing condition wise, can I start presenting like the exhibit here, or, um, my, my, um?
It's fine if you use the exhibit to clarify, as long as we're focused predominantly on the discussion of what they're, we're going to grant the waiver request for the EIS, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I would like to, I guess, have exhibit A1, which is our site plan sheet one that was submitted to the board. What's the date on that, Mr. Ficino? Uh, the date on that is, uh, 10/21/21, labeled sheet one, cover sheet. I wanna, uh, can you, can everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
You can, okay, great, I just wanna zoom into here, here to the aerial photography. The, there's an existing four, uh, four-story building here, and, um, you know, there's a, the property is rectangular in shape here, and along the sides, along the westerly and northerly and easterly sideline, I'm sorry, along the easterly and northerly sidelines, there are steep slopes that go up to a, um, residential complex to our north, and then this is Benihanas to our left. So these slopes here, they currently are held up by retaining walls. These retaining walls are made out of railroad ties, and those walls have been in there a enormously long time, and many of them have been collapsing, and part of this application is to rebuild those walls. And with that, I'm assuming, you know, we are disturbed by steep slopes, but not to the fact that they're previously disturbed is where I, where I'm getting at, actually. That's it, other than that, I, I mean, we are, um, you know, like I said, there's no wetlands, there's no streams, there's no buffers, wetlands buffers to, to be worried about. We're, we're removing three little trees as part of this application, which are de minimis, and the, uh, the forester also noted that in his review letters. That's all I really have to say at this point, unless you have any questions.
Um, I have one additional question, which is regarding, are there, is there any additional coverage being proposed? I know there will be the electric charging, but are there also canopies, and will that impact any stormwater runoff?
No, the, the, the canopies from the solar panels? Will, they will actually, no, because those are being placed right where the pavement is, so there's not gonna be any increase in stormwater management and stormwater runoff, other than we are extending, we are going to be extending the rear parking area by a few feet, only to make the parking spots more into compliance. But, you know, if the board wishes to not do that, we don't have to, because the existing stalls are now only 14 feet long, and, uh, which are located in the north side here, these parking spaces are only 14 feet long, so our disturbance in the steep slope here is, is part of extending the parking lot to make it more inconformant.
Understood, so the overall impact is an increase in impermeable surface from a technical perspective.
Yeah, by 144 square feet, which is very de minimis on the size of this, on a three and a half foot, a three and a, three and a half acre site, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, does anybody else on the board have questions for? Mr. Ficino, based on this testimony, Mark, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, do you know where, where the water drains?
Yes, currently, yeah, sure, sure, the, the water currently drains to stormwater inlets that are located throughout the parking lot, and they, they discharge out to Morris Turnpike.
Okay, has, has there been a thought or a plan at all that's been discussed to do a rain garden or bioswale to basically capture some of the stormwater runoff, or a lot of the stormwater runoff?
Uh, we, we have not discussed that option. Um, and it, you know, as far as we're concerned, we don't trigger a major development, so it really is not required, but I, I think the applicant, what he's proposing is, uh, is really environmentally friendly as far as solar panels, solar, solar reuse. But we would, you know, we, we could consider working with the engineer, Martha, and see if it's worthwhile to do something, understood?
That would be appreciated, and there's some really good models, both locally and, you know, throughout the state, that can be used as a model, if you're interested. Thank you.
Yep.
Great, thank you, um, Mayor Miggins?
Thank you so much, but do you plan on replacing the trees that you're cutting down?
Uh, we do not, just, we're, we're, you're getting more into my testimony, but we're removing a six-inch tree, a nine-inch tree, and an eight-inch tree, which are, actually, I'm sorry, 10, a nine, and a six, which the only one that's actually regulated by the, by the ordinance is the 10-inch tree. Um, and the tree arborist, the forester stated that that tree was in poor condition anyway, so it should have come down anyway. I'm sure, you know, we will be, if the board would like us to plant a few more trees, the only issue with planting more trees is the only green area, or the only plantable area on a site is very steep, and any disturbance to the existing ground will actually disturb a lot of the mature trees that are located along the, the northerly side, as well as the westerly side of the site. So, you, you could probably plant a tree here or there, but not, you know, you have to be very, very careful not disturbing the, um, the existing roots of the existing trees and actually making it a worse condition instead of a better condition. But we could work with the forester to see where we could possibly plant the tree or two, an evergreen tree.
Thank you. Great, thank you, um, any additional questions or? Okay, um, so granted what we've heard, uh, we would, if anybody would want to move to approve granting the waiver for the EIS for this application.
I'll move it.
Thank you, 10 seconds, thank you, Diane, I mean, did you catch that? Great, okay. You're muted, but I think you're good. Are, are we a roll call vote, or we're, uh, and all in favor of this?
We're a roll call vote.
Thanks.
Who was the second?
Dan.
Yes, Don Halper?
Yes.
Mark Mattson?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
SuJapha Sean?
Yes.
Diane Egglow?
Yes.
Deborah Nevis?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Beth Saul?
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ficino, you can continue on with the testimony as planned.
Okay, great, um, okay, so my next exhibit I would like to enter is a aerial photo. Um, I would like to call this, oh, you know what, should we, I, I got a request, should we label all the site plan sheets as A1 through A7, uh, because they're consistent of seven sheets? Would that make sense, and then we go to the next one, in case I have? We can do it any way you, you like, uh, we already have A1, which was the, the cover sheet. Correct, yeah, um, so, yeah, let's do it that way, let, let's just mark him in as evidence, and so if I refer back to him, I can always refer them as A1, A2, A3, and then the page numbers will help us keep it consistent. So why don't we do this, why don't we label the cover sheet A1A, lowercase a, since you probably won't be referring to that, um, much more, and then we'll use sheet one, right, that's, that's? Mm-hmm, the cover sheet. Is, is that page one, is the next sheet, page? Yeah, the next sheet's page two. Okay, oh, that's fine, that's fine, we don't have to change anything, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you said. Yeah, so I figured, you know, sheet two would be page two, A2, I'm sorry, which is the Boundary and Topographic Survey. Um, against dated, they're all dated, um, actually, I'm sorry, this one's dated 5/7/21, because this was the survey. Page three is, sorry, I'm skipping here. Uh, page three is dated 10/21/20, and that's the site plan. Four, four is the lighting plan with the same date, sorry, four, five is the soil erosion settlement control plan. Sheet six are construction details with the same date. Just wanna make sure, no, actually, the date is 8/23/21, and page seven is dated 8/23/21. Okay, so there's your A1 through A7, which is the same site plans you have before you, hard copy, I'm assuming. Okay, then, one other one, I would like to introduce the, an aerial photo with our proposed site plan, uh, superimposed on top of it. Um, I guess this could be A, A8, okay? Um, and there, it's a, basically what it is, it's an aerial photo from their map, uh, which was from July 22nd, 2021, uh, and then we superimposed our proposed improvements, which will help, um, really help everyone understand how this all fits in with the surrounding area. Okay, and I also have a photo board of different photos from, uh, from different locations throughout the site, to help, um, the members, if there's any questions on what is the visual impact, and what is the visual, um, visual at this right now, currently? Okay, so that is called photo board number one, um, all four photos were taken by KC and Keller on March 1st, 2022. Actually, they were taken by me directly, so, okay, so those are the, I'm sorry. We'll mark that A9. A9, correct, yep, okay, great, so those are the exhibits I'll probably be referring to this evening, uh, but as of right now, I want to go to exhibit A8, okay? Um, and exhibit A8, just basically I wanna talk about the site a little bit here, uh, let me zoom in a little bit. Okay, there we go, okay. Um, so the site is known as Block 2002, Lot 24, also known as 830 Morris Turnpike. It is located in the B2 Zone District. The site is rectangular in shape, uh, for the most part, um, and it consists of approximately 3.29 acres. It fronts on Morris and Essex Turnpike, which is located to our south. The property contains a four-story office building, uh, including the ground floor is a podium parking, uh, which has 59 parking spaces underneath the building. The office building is surrounded by a surface parking area, as discussed a little, a little bit earlier regarding the EIS, um, which consists of approximately, which consists of 265 parking spaces. There are wooded areas located to the west, as well as to the north, um, that are steep slopes. The slopes along the westerly property line of, um, range from as little as 10 feet climb from the property line to the parking lot, to almost to 28 feet from the parking lot to the property line. Along the northerly side, the steep slopes vary between 15 to 16 feet from the existing pavement to the rear property line. The site is bounded by. Uh, the site is bounded by to our. Uh, east, I'm sorry, to our west by Benihana Restaurant. Um, to our west are is an office building. To our south is, like I said, Morris Turnpike, as well as additional office buildings. And then to our north is a residential complex, which, um, fortunately is also owned by the applicant. Um. These, uh, the. Residential complex, uh, is a three-level complex. Um, the first floor of the complex is actually garage parking. Um, and then the second and third floors of the complex are a living space. Uh, and that'll be important later on when we discuss, um, the visual, visual impacts. Um. Uh, there are. Two, and there's one entrance and one exit from the site. Um, the the entrance to our site is on the, uh, easterly side, and the exit driveway is on the westerly side. Uh, both driveways allow for cars to pull in from either direction of Morris Turnpike. And, uh, the exit driveway allows you to, um, exit in both in the east and west direction of Morris Turnpike. There's no, there's no restrictions with regarding to circulation of vehicles through the site and exiting the site. So why are we here? Um. With this vast grow in solar energy field technology, uh, the applicant is proposing to install three solar arrays. Um, in over the existing parking lot and drive aisles. Uh, one of them is going to be located on the, uh, west side of the building. And the other two are located at the north side of the building. And the these locations have been chosen, uh, after considering considerable analysis and working with the, uh. The solar company, um, regarding the solar, um. Exposure that the site can provide throughout the day, and these are ideal locations for the solar panels, and this is. The main reason why we chose these, um, locations and sizes. Uh, the solar arrays will have a minimum clearance height of approximately fourteen feet. Um, I know our plans show, uh, at one of the arrays being only thirteen point five feet high, but we are going to amend that our. Application to have a minimum of fourteen foot clearance, uh, to allow for, um. Vehicles, uh, to travel with no, no, uh, obstructions. Um, it has been noted that the planner, um, by the planner, that the solar, the solar arrays that are proposed are actually not a permitted use. Um, because the ordinance does not specifically, um, allow. Uh, or specifically state that, uh, solar panels are allowed. They're actually a bulk variance will be required for solar panels. Um, I'll provide testimony later as the reason why, um. The granting of these, these, uh, this use is, um. I- i- is a good idea. Um, we're also proposing to re-stripe the parking area, uh, to accommodate the solar arrays. Um, right now, the, um, the parking lot is striped, but it's it's in pretty bad condition. Uh, some of the parking spaces are actually, um, deficient in size, uh, that are striped. So we are going to re-stripe the entire parking lot with the exception of the westerly side. Sorry, the easterly side and a portion of the westerly side is not being re-striped. As you can see in in my exhibit here, the ones in the stripes in black are the ones that we're going to be re-striping. Which is is mostly the whole parking lot with the exception of a couple locations. Um, with the re-striping, we're going to be reducing the parking count from three hundred and twenty-four parking spaces to three hundred and eleven parking spaces. Uh, with the current use of the building, which is a split of medical and office. Uh, it's required to have two hundred and ninety-five parking spaces, so we would, we still comply with the requirement of, uh, parking for this use. Um, there's no change to vehicle circulation. Um, the vehicles, uh, have drive aisles and, um, that access the entire building, uh, three hundred and sixty degrees of the building. So there's actually no change to the circulation. They're all two-way drive aisles. Um, and they meet the, um, ordinance code requirement. Those parking stalls, uh, as I stated earlier, the parking stalls along the northerly side are only fourteen, are currently only fourteen feet long. Um, and, um. Uh, we're proposing to increase them to a se- to seventeen feet long by nine feet wide, which is still technically non. Um, not compliant with the ordinance, with your township ordinance, so a waiver is required, but we want to know that. Being that it's going to be seventeen feet, we do have a two-foot overhang, which brings the, which allows for nineteen feet vehicle to park there. But we're still requiring a waiver from that. Um, and we also didn't want to bring the parking lot. Uh, further into the slope, um, the the curb further into a slope and disturb the steep slopes even further, so.
Could I, could I request you, sorry for interrupting, could I request you zoom in? Just so I can sort of re- repeat that a little bit a- as we, so we can see, um, the area we're talking about.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, sorry.
I'm gonna make sure I'm fully getting.
Yeah, in the rear, I mean, it's hard to see with the aerial photo underneath, but the there's existing, there's an existing parking lot, uh, underneath here. Um, you can kind of see the white stripes, uh, faintly here. Um, so basically the parking lot right now, the curb ends at fourteen feet. So the curb, the curb face currently is approximately, uh, three feet off of this existing, this proposed curb line. Um, so, um. We are proposing to ex- extend the parking space so that you have at least a seventeen-foot parking spot. And then allow you to have at least a two-foot overhang. Um, for the car to have a, so, you know, a, a, uh, nineteen by nine-foot parking space, which is required by code. So that's one, one waiver we're requesting. Um. Okay, um, there's an existing, I I, just for the record, there's an existing salt storage area here. In the, uh, northwesterly corner of the of the parking lot, and that is going to remain. Um, our client, uh, will, was informed that it should be covered, um, and it it will be covered, um. Uh, from now on. Uh, currently today, it's not covered, but the client will be covering that salt, a salt pile. And that's used, uh, obviously for the parking lot during the winter months. Um, there's a refuse, uh, container that kind of just sits out here, uh, blocking one of the, um, parking spaces. Um, and that will be removed and relocated to a dumpster, uh, enclosure, which I will discuss in a few minutes, in a few minutes here. Um. So to clarify again, the solar arrays will provide the sufficient clearance and circulation space for trucks to access the, the salt pile. As well as the refuse area, which, uh, will be located in a westerly, um, parking area. Um, over here, so the the trucks will have, um, because of the clearance. Um, that we moved the dumpster here because of the clearance needed for a front-end load to lift up the dumpster. But as far as the salt, eh, the contractor uses a very small Bobcat, which a fourteen-foot clearance is more than enough. For, um, for him to, uh, to work there. The solar arrays will not impede emergency vehicle access into site. Uh, particularly fire truck access will continue to be able to access all sides. So the fire truck, um, you know, because of the clearance, most fire trucks are only a maximum of thirteen feet high. And will have a minimum of at least fourteen foot clear. So fire trucks will not have an issue. Um, the fire official, um, fire department did have, uh, comments. Um, and what none, uh, none of them were related to circulation, um, as I believe he feels that, uh, there is enough access there. Um, we're proposing to install seven dual, um, electric charging stations, um, along the westerly property line. Um, they are pretty small to in scale, so that's why they're. To see, but I labeled them on the, uh, exhibit here. Uh, so we do one, two, three. Four, five, six, and then the seventh one is actually located underneath the building. Uh, where it can be accessed by, uh, handicap parking spaces, because one of the new requirements. Are that, uh, one of them be allow for handicap accessibility. Uh, and this one will allow for actually two handicap parking spaces to, um, access the, the, um, the the units. As I stated in the beginning, we right, pretty much where these retaining walls are proposed to go. Uh, we are going to be replacing old railroad tie walls. Um, just so you have an idea, let me go to my board. My, yes, here we go. Um, this is exhibit, uh, A. A nine, okay, um, just so the board knows, th- this is what the northerly. Railroad tie wall looks like today, or actually as of two days ago, one day ago. Um, so you can see that they're in very bad shape and, uh, we really, they they're in desperate need of repair. Um, this one here is, uh, is on, um, also on that northerly side there. And then the westerly side retaining walls are in okay condition, but they will eventually be replaced. Uh, and I'll discuss that a little bit later regarding to what the wall types. Um, okay, back to my exhibit A eight. Okay, um. Where was I? Let me see, um. So the retaining walls were will be, the new retaining walls will be a large. Um, two by two, two foot by two foot high by five feet long, um, big block wall. Um, and the reason, and the reason why we picked the big block wall is because. Any kind of retaining wall today, a modular or smaller modular retaining walls require a substantial amount of geo grid. Uh, and excavation behind it with stone and and, uh, to to reinforce the wall from it collapsing. These larger block walls, which are well in excess of, some of them are a- 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 close to two tons. Um, don't need that kind of disturbance of the steep slopes, so we thought that this would be definitely a. Uh, a home run, uh, in this situation, and, um, those walls will last a very, very long time. They do come with a nice finish in front, so they look like, um, there's a few finishes, uh, that that they come with, but they can be very. Um, aesthetically pleasing looking, um, finishes, um, which I think, uh, would would work here very well. Um, the walls are facing. Our building in both situations along the, um, the westerly and northerly side. Um, because of this, you know, the slope is on the uphill side, uh, these walls, no one will see these walls except people that are actually. Uh, driving in within our parking area. Um. Suppose, uh. Right, uh, we talked about that, um. So just to know, uh, and I I I don't know what what, how much a poll it really has, but. We, um, our applicant was before the Board of Adjustment in two thousand and seventeen. Um, and the, these retaining walls were originally approved to be replaced then. Uh, unfortunately, his variance has lapsed, so, but just. For the board's knowledge, the Board of Adjustment did approve the wall heights to be six feet tall. Um, and and of modular block, uh, the large block. Um, so again, I'm sorry, I I I should mention, the walls are going to be tiered walls. Uh, very, very similar to what the railroad tie walls are. The lower walls will be approximately six feet high, and then the the rear walls will be anywhere between one and a half feet to five feet tall. So, um, if you count the wall as a single wall, it's going to be eleven feet high, which, uh, the planner has noted that that would be, uh, that's a variance. Because the maximum height of walls is only six feet. Um. I stated earlier that the rear retaining wall is in really bad condition and has to be replaced. Uh, immediately, well, immediately, as soon as the site plan gets approved, uh, hopefully gets approved. Um, and then the wall, the the existing walls along the west side are, uh, they're capable of handling of quite a few more years, so. With the large expense of these retaining walls, which is a considerable amount. Um, uh, the applicant is wishing to potentially phase the wall construction. Um. The the northerly wall will. We are proposing that it be installed, it be reconstructed, uh, you know, as part of this. Um, as part of this application that when they build the, um, solar arrays. Um, the wall to our west, we are requesting that, uh, the wall be phased that would be re- be built within approximately three years. Um, I I think that's a fair enough number to 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 be able to recoup a little bit of 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 money and 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 pay for the next venture. Um, and also, fortunately for us, the wall on the west side. Um, is able, you're able to get vehicles in there later on, even with this, uh, solar array being in the way. That was the other reason why we chose that this wall, it's best that this wall could be done at a later date. Perhaps we might just do most of the wall and leave a portion of it out. It really is a large expense, uh, to build these walls and, um, we're hoping. Because this railroad tie wall is still functioning okay, uh, we think we can get a few more years out of it and and potentially get, uh. Be able to get some revenue before, uh, instead of borrowing more and more, more and more money with this inflation happening. It's 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 mad. Okay, um, so that's the walls. Uh, I mentioned earlier about the refuse, uh, container that's right now just sits out in the parking lot. We are planning on proposing a dumpster enclosure. Uh, it's a twelve by twelve dumpster enclosure. It's located approximately two hundred and eighty feet away from Morris Turnpike. Um, it's currently designed to be screened by a six-foot-high chain-link fence with vinyl slats. Um, I thought that was fine, only because it was located two hundred and eighty feet away from the road. But the planner has, uh, recommended that the, um, enclosure be of a six-foot-high, uh, solid fence. Um. And I I I'm, I'm, we're okay, the applicant is okay with doing that. Um, so I I would like to just quickly amend the application to, uh, propose the. Twelve by twelve dumpster enclosure to be a solid, uh, a solid fence, six foot high. Um, I also would like to, if we could, just keep the, um, easterly side chain link. Only because, um, chain-link fence, uh, is is is, I think, more durable. Um, and with the, with the doors constantly swinging and closing, I think. Um, the chain-link fence with the vinyl slats on the easterly side will last a little longer. Um, and and be able to lay way a little less and be able to be open easier. Um, and also just to note, though, that chain-link fence would be facing our rear parking area, so. Nobody from Morris Turnpike or, uh, anywhere could really, nobody is really going to notice that the, those chain-link fences.
Thank you, that's noted.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving along here, um. We're installing new lights throughout the entire parking lot. Uh, currently, the parking lot, I feel, is 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 deficient. We didn't run existing calculations, but the parking lot is definitely lacking light, lighting, um. Uh, for the, for it, so we are proposing underneath the, uh, proposed solar arrays, nineteen. Flush-mounted, uh, ceiling-mounted, uh, um, fixtures. Um, they will not be visible to, um, anybody from the adjoining properties, because. Um, they are be going to be covered by the solar panels. Uh, additionally, there are three, um, existing poles. Two of them are located in the northerly side, one of them located on the westerly side, which are going to be relocated, because there's. N- no need for them anymore, because we have the, um, the lights from the underneath the, um. The the, uh, solar panels, so we are actually going to place those where they're needed, which are actually, um. One of them is going to be going on the, uh, westerly, uh, southwestly corner. Um, we have two existing ones that are located along Morris Turnpike. We are proposing another one right in the middle. And we have, uh. One, two, and three more new ones, and this one, uh, along the westerly, I'm sorry, easterly side is existing. So we're proposing, um. Two new ones and three existing ones are being relocated. Those poles are currently twenty-two foot tall. Um, they are, um, going to be LED. Um. Uh, full cutoff, uh, fa- down-facing. Um, I know the, in the planner's letter, um, he suggested that we install all the lights at fifteen feet. Um, we did consider that, but unfortunately, we feel that it's best to keep these consistent with what's there. Um, as well as. Um, as well as, um, by lowering it to fifteen feet, you would need a considerable amount more lights. Um, and you know, we all, all we would be doing is adding lights in these parking base. Uh, which are now going to be conflicting with the parking spaces, um, if we can get the uniformity correct. So by do, by providing these lights in the, uh, the, um, outer areas. Uh, I think it, it, it's, it's a better design, um, and it's still consistent with what's there today. Also proposed are going to be two wall mounted lights on the building. Those are only ten feet high in order to light the, um, this portion of the, uh, parking lot. Um, our lights, I guess, are intent, uh, that the external lights will be left on with, um, at full power till approximately ten PM. And then I, if our client would like to, I would propose that we dim the lights to fifty percent, um, until dawn. Uh, that way there's, uh, adequate security lighting, um, around the entire parking lots for police to, uh. To monitor, um, because this is a fairly large parking lot and, and it's in a location of town where, um, you know, you could, uh, hide. Easily without lights, um, so I, that we, we are planning on shutting, uh, going to fifty percent after, um, ten PM. With this lighting that we're proposing, um, there are a few waivers that we're requesting. Um, there's a waiver regarding average illumination levels. The ordinance requires a point five to one foot candle reading, uh, for an average. We are proposing a one point six, so a, um, a, a waiver is being requested for that. Additionally, uh, we have a waiver, um, for the max to minimum light ratio. Basically, um, the, the ma- uh, the, the ratio of what the lowest and the highest reading are on site. Um, and I will discuss those two, um, uh, waivers, uh, in my planning testimony. Um, uh, but we know that those are waivers and, um. Really, the way we have this designed light wise, I think is the best solution at this moment in time. It's the best, uh, design at this moment in time. All right, um, regarding landscaping, okay, uh. The township ordinance requires a buffer to a residential zone, which is to our north, um, of fifty feet. Uh, currently, the buffer to the existing railroad tie walls are only fifteen point four feet. Um, the solar panel, um, solar array, as well as the rear retaining wall. Will reduce the buffer to approximately eleven point four feet. So we're basically losing an additional four feet of buffer, but when I say buffer, I'm going to go back to the pictures. These are, this is the rear property line, our northerly property line, when I, you know. These, you know, this buffer that's here are all invasive species, they are kind of just growing wild. Um, and they don't, granted, they might be green in the summertime, they're really invasive species and, uh, I don't think that's. What the town really likes to see, um, so. The wall will be set back an additional four feet here to allow for the, um. The seventeen foot parking spaces and then a two foot overhang and then you can start the retaining wall. And then the, which pushes this rear retaining wall, which is relatively short, a little further back. But it's hard to see in the photo, but there is a, a pretty good distance from these trees in the back to this rear wall. So you're really not disturbing a tremendous amount of, of steep slope. Uh, it's really previous disturbed vegetation or, you know, area and, you know, cleaning this up will actually. Make this look a lot nicer from the parking lot side. I'm going to refer back to my aerial rendering, which is, um, A eight, okay? Okay, um.
Can you, sorry, can, can you just speak to, um. Be, beyond that wall between the, the new retaining wall where you just showed us. And where there are the invasive species, uh, which you just mentioned. Is the plan to remove them and replace them? Could you just reiterate what the proposal is?
Yeah, so, um, the, the. Uh, let me, I guess we can go back to the photo, um, this is, yeah, this is photo number four, which is, uh, located. Um, on the, um, easterly side of the apartments, um, it's, uh, looking north on the east side, um. Yeah, um, yeah, so basically, uh, what's going to happen is, basically, this, this wall here, which is, this one's only, um, four and probably. Two feet here, so we're actually going to push this back, um, and, and this is all going to be cleaned up, it's, um. It, it's, it's, it's hard to, to, to show, cause I don't have a, I can't really superimpose the, um, the, the array, but, um. But over this will be a, um, solar array, um, so all this will be, the whole entire embankment will be covered. But this wall will be, um, a concrete wall, um, you know, straight up and then there'll be terracing back with another. Smaller wall in the back to make up the grade to get to, um, to the back. Um, so in between the walls where we weren't proposing to do any landscaping, only because the solar array will be completely covering. The area between the walls and, um, I don't believe any vegetation will live, uh, will grow. Between the two walls, so, um, we're not proposing anything between the two walls.
Okay, so just, just to make sure I, I understand, I want to make sure I am the, the board understand. I just heard in your testimony that there's currently about fifteen feet between what are, you know, these now degraded wooden walls and the, the back property line.
Yes, also, correct, from the, from the back of this retaining wall, the, the upper wall to the back of the property line, which is up here. Uh, is approximately fifteen point four feet.
Okay, and the proposed condition would make that about eleven feet of that, that buffer.
Eleven point four, correct, we're losing basically the four feet because we're pushing this parking lot, this park, this curbing back. Four feet and that's, a- and I think the benefits will definitely outweigh the detriment, because these parking spaces are only fourteen foot deep. I, I've been here a couple of times, you know, saying, I, I, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If, if, if I could just finish my question, no, no, it's okay, just, I want to make sure we, we get to my question, which is. In that eleven feet, what, what I just heard you talking about is the solar array will cover it. Can you just describe and if you want to refer to your other, I, I'm trying to understand what's happening in that eleven foot buffer and there would be landscaping in there.
Gotcha, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, in that, in that eleven foot buffer that ex- that's going to stay, this is this eleven point four feet.
Right.
Uh, that's going to stay vegetated, uh, currently, right now, um, if you look, uh, I'm going to go back to the photo board, uh. And I, I want to go to these photos, uh, uh, photo number five and six, this is, uh, exhibit A nine. Um, five and six are actually, the photo number five is looking, um. Uh, towards, uh, Morris, uh, Morris Turnpike, um, and this is what's up there now, so you have these fairly large, mature evergreen trees. Um, that they're true, that they're true tree roots, uh, definitely, um, you know, you, use our property, so. A- any additional vegetation that we try to plant in here, um, in between will probably disturb these nice mature trees. And as I stated earlier, the apartment complex, which I'm standing right behind, right behind me is the complex. Um, right behind me are garages, so this, this first floor of, of these apartments are garages, so no one has any windows looking out. So I'm going to, I was going to get to my testimony in a few seconds here, but, um, along this back property line. Uh, if everyone can see, there's a chain link fence here, um, that chain link fence we're proposing to make that a six foot high. Uh, solid fence, so that would considerably help the visual impact. From the, um, the neighborhood property, which is where I'm standing, um, um, and also not disturb. Any of the root system of the trees and keep these, uh, evergreen trees here, uh, growing and thriving. Um, you know, they're are wrapped in quite a bit of Ivy and stuff, but, um, they are, they are functioning, um, this was, yeah, so that's the. This is facing, this is the, um, west side of our building and this is the east side of our building. Uh, standing again in front of somebody, this is on, uh, photo number six, standing in front of the garages, shooting towards our building. So now, yeah, so, so the, um, so going back to A eight, um, yeah, that. Eleven point, eleven point four feet will remain existing vegetation. Because like I said, these blocks that we're going to be installing do not need any form of geo grid. Cause they're relatively small, like, is, this one's only going to be three feet tall and the back one and the front one is six. Or actually, the front one is five feet tall, the back one's three foot tall, so these walls really are, you're just going to dig a little hole. Put these, these blocks in without needing to disturb any of these existing trees or reboot balls, whatever's out there, um, existing today. Uh, on, on our property as well as the adjacent property.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, um. Uh, and the, the other, uh, the other reason why we can't plant additional trees, not that we didn't want to, it's just. Um, a law, um, going back to that photo board, which will probably help me here, uh. A little difficult to see, but in photo number five, there are overhead power lines, uh, on the adjacent property owner. Um, the complex, the residential complex, so any additional trees which our owner, our, our client, our applicant owns. So we could have planted trees here, but unfortunately, if you plant trees here, they're eventually going to grow and interfere with these overhead wires which feed the entire complex. So, y- you know, we really would love to plant more, but it's very, very, very hard to plant anything without. Either disrupting something else or disturbing or making it worse, uh, so we feel that planting, uh, I'm sorry, installing a, um. A, a fence, uh, along the entire back property line, a six foot solid fence would really help a lot. Okay, um, just, all right, going back to my exhibit, um. A eight. Okay, hold on, there we go, okay, um, the. But regarding utilities, um, our ser- our building is serviced with all public utilities. Um, the electric charging stations, uh, will be supplied by the, uh, existing electric service from our building. We, um, with regards to stormwater management, as I stated in the begin- in the beginning, uh, we're. Just increasing a minor bit of impervious along the back rear property line of, uh. A hundred and, uh, so, um, it was a hundred and forty-four square feet somewhere around here, uh, which is de minimis. It's really not going to produce anything of any significance that will overboarding the storm system. But we will definitely talk, the client will talk to the, uh, with, uh, Martha and we will see if there's anything that. Uh, we could do to make, uh, things a little bit better. I know, uh, the township engineer has requested, has requested that we clean out the system. Uh, there's a trench drain located at the entrance of our building, um, which we have no problem agreeing to clean. Uh, with regards to approvals, we just need approval from the Hudson Essex Passaic County SED. Um, and, uh, we will be submitting to them, uh, once we, uh, hopefully get this, uh, application approved this evening or hopefully this evening. So, um, with regards to. Site plan testimony, that's all I really had, um. And I guess next I could really talk about all the planning testimony and go variance by variance, unless someone has any questions. Regarding the site plans at this point.
Does anybody have any questions regarding the site plans before he kind of moved on? I'm certainly curious to hear a few more of the testimonies that you alluded to, um. But if anything, it was just mentioned, um, Mr. Busak, go ahead.
Yes, you referred to a fence that was, uh, on the back, uh, behind the second retaining wall. My question is, if, is that fence located on the property line between your property and the adjacent residential property?
Yes, it's right, it's actually right on the line.
Okay, and, and the, how, i- is that eleven feet you were referring to from the fence? To the top of the wall, the second wall?
Correct, correct, yep, a- and, 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 um, the, um. The solar array as well, so the eleven foot four will be. The, the wall as well as the, um, overhanging solar panel, which is actually going to be elevated above the ground, obviously.
Okay, the, the solar panel will, will be above both of those retaining walls, is that correct?
That's, that is correct, correct, yep.
Okay, and, and there, there is no landscaping being proposed between the edge. Or the, the fence that you're proposing to install and the adjacent property line, is that correct?
That is correct, there's existing vegetation near of, as I showed you in the photos, the large mature evergreen trees.
That's, that's on that property or on the residential?
Um, it, it kind of strangles the, straddles the property line, um, but they're, I mean, it's hard to say. Uh, you know, uh, they're, they're, they're on both, some of them are fairly large trees and they, they straddle the property line, so, um. You know, it's hard, hard, hard to say exactly which one is which, I do have on our site plans, I do have them, here they are. Yeah, so you can see they're actually right on the line, if they're not on the line, they're actually on our property. Uh, most of them are on our property.
Okay, and those, those are then, for lack of a better word, inside the fence line that is along. That, uh, property line, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Okay, um, guess, go ahead.
I just had a question about, um, the impervious coverage, how it's increasing by one hundred square feet or so. We're moving the parking lot by about four feet. Is there impervious coverage there that's not used in the parking lot now, or could you clarify that a little bit? So we understand exactly where that impervious coverage is coming from?
Sure, uh, I guess I can just go to our sheet. It's hard to, it's going to be hard to say, but I guess, uh, A, A three. A three, which is our sheet three of our site plans. Right now, the existing curb is this black line that you see. Um, along where my cursor is running along now, okay, um. So we are actually proposing to push the curb line back, uh, approximately four feet. To make this parking space seventeen feet long, so the impervious coverage that's been increased is from. This little bit of pavement that we're going to need to, uh, install. To, um, to get these parking spaces to at least seventeen feet deep. Does that answer your question?
Um, I, I guess, uh, sort of, so it, it's, we're increasing it by four feet and it's how wide?
Yeah, it's, uh, uh, well, it's, uh, four by, hold on, I'll get you a number, let me try and get to my CAD file so I can. Uh, let me see here. Uh, it, be nice if I zoomed in. It is approximately, uh. Two hundred and fifty feet long?
Two fifty, so I'm like a thousand, a thousand square feet then.
Times. Why? Are we reducing somewhere now, I'm questioning that, so I apologize, we're increasing a little bit more than that, yeah. Where, so two fifty times four, yeah, yeah, so it's a thousand square feet, my, my, my apologies. What we've, I thought maybe, maybe we were reducing somewhere, I guess not, um, yeah, so I'm sorry, that we're increasing by a thousand square feet. I would, I would, I would, I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, I thought, uh, Ms. Nevis, do you have a question, go ahead.
Thank you, um, couple of questions, um, in terms of the lighting. Are those going to be downward facing lights that? Are they currently downward facing, are the ones that you're putting in going to be downward facing?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely, yes, they, they're shoebox, shoebox type lights, um, and, um, they're downward facing. Actually, the, the new ones, um, if I want to go back to our plans, um, exhibit, um. Uh, they would be exhibit. Uh, oh, uh, the lighting plan, where is it? Here we go, exhibit A four. They're both, um. I know it's hard to see with this, the section view, but, um, the ones under the canopy will, will look, uh, like, like, uh, will be the Lithonia. The V C P G series, um, and they're typical, you know, undermounted, um, lights for, uh, solar, solar panels. And then the, um, the pole mounted ones will, 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 actually they're new, they're newer L E D, uh, slim fixtures. Um. That are being proposed, um, as well as these, I'm sorry, these here are the building mounted ones, and then, um. I saw, I, I'm sorry, the, the, the Lithonia J C P Ks are the underneath the canopies. These Lithonia D S X Ws are the two building mounted signs, lights, I'm sorry. And then the ones that we're using in the parking lot are going to be the same shoebox lights that are there today. Let me see if I have a photo referring back to A nine. Um. Can you see that there on the photo? Those are your typical shoebox lights, um, and they do face down and there's zero cutoff poles, uh, zero cutoff lights.
Okay, and, and, um, the current lighting hours in that parking lot for the existing lights are what?
Um, I, honestly, I don't know, um, that's something maybe the applicant or maybe, um.
I, I can, yeah, I can help on that. Uh, based upon current needs and uses, lighting begins at dusk. And ends in the evening at ten P M. Because the, uh, usage of the property doesn't require any more than that. But given, um, the opportunity to have higher quality lighting. With much lower costs, we would like to provide additional lighting for security to. Both the building, uh, tenants as well as the community. Because as, uh, our engineer pointed out. If you have a large paved area at night that is unlit, it is a place for. People who are seeking to conceal themselves in automobiles, uh, might find attractive. And I, I'm familiar with, uh, Milburn Police Department patrols and alike. And I think that this would be welcome to have one less area that they need to actually drive through to secure in the evening. They'd be able to simply drive by and see that there's no vehicles there that should not be there. But again, the lighting hour is, is a malleable feature. And if, is determined that it's not necessary to have that kind of additional security, it's very simple to adjust it.
Thank you, um, I just have one other question, um. Uh, not about the lighting, about the, um, the trees. So my understanding is that. Mayor Miggins had asked about replacing the trees that are going to be removed, and the response was that. Uh, there would be a risk because of the soil disturbance. But, um, it sounds like there's going to be a lot of soil disturbance with, um, pushing back on that northern wall. So I'm just wondering whether, whatever, uh, landscaping exists there that's not going to be removed is also at risk. If the trees that are, that can't be replaced would be, um. At risk if new trees were planted, if that makes sense.
I, I apologize, you, you, you did lose me, um.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so, so there's three trees in this corner, that, I, let me go to my actual site plans. So we could see exactly, if we go to sheet, um, sheet A three, okay? There are three trees here, uh, one of them is an eight, another one's a nine, and a project, the other one's a six. I, I, uh, uh, so these three trees here, because of this retaining wall being built, um, are being removed. Um, that's everything else is staying, all these other trees that are located around it are staying. Um, you know, removing these three trees of this, of this size is, I don't think, uh, uh, gonna make a big, uh, impact. On our, um, on the residents behind us. But if we can, we will replant a few trees. Um, again, I, I stated, if you try and plant trees in between these steep slopes that these trees have established roots. And you're actually going to do more harm than good. Um, and what will happen is maybe the tree won't die right away, but then these trees end up dying, which are really, you know, uh, mature trees. Um, and then you end up, um, making it worse than, uh, than having a little tree that, um, will take a long time to grow. So, that, that, that's my point, I mean, but are there areas where we could plant additional trees? Perhaps, it's just hard to determine it with this kind of vegetation in your way right now. Once this is all cleaned up and all these invasive, uh, I'm, I'm referring back to, uh, you know, exhibit A, A nine here. Um, photo, um, photo four, um, once this invasive species are all cleared, I'm. Fairly certain that we could plant a few trees, so if the, if, if the forest, if you don't mind, we work with the forester. And, and, uh, uh, as a condition of approval to plant a few trees, that's fine.
Okay, I get, I appreciate that, my question was, if you're pushing back on that, um. Four or five feet on that northern wall. To expand the parking, why that soil disruption or steep slope disruption wouldn't disturb the trees that already exist?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to see in this photo, but these trees in the back that are existing are, are a good distance away, a- and. Yeah, I, I'm not a, a tree professional, but, uh, you know, we will definitely take serious precaution. I mean, the back wall here is only gonna be three feet high, um, so it's not. You know, I'm not, I'm not gonna disrupt too much, uh, I, I think we can still salvage those trees in the back. Um, if, you know, I, we, we'd rather not plant, we'd rather not build. Which it might actually be cheaper to build one large wall, straight up, um, of, of eleven feet tall. Or in this case, in this situation, it'll be only nine feet tall. But we felt that breaking it up a little bit will look a little bit nicer, even though this isn't an office space building, it doesn't really matter, but. Um, i- i- you know, maybe this is more of a question, it's a risk versus, uh, reward, I guess, I don't know. It's hard, it's hard for me to say exactly, uh, um, whether we should or should not terrace this wall now. Um, maybe we should just put one large wall. Um, so, uh, I don't know, to answer the question, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you for your, appreciate your time, um, I see we have a couple of other questions, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Okay, um, Maggie, I see your hand is up, Mark, I'm not sure if you do want your hand raised or not, because it had been down, okay? Then just leave it up if you do want it or not, okay, go ahead, Maggie. So you didn't want it, okay. That mark to you next.
And thank you, Madam Chair, Anthony, have you considered, um, looking at geotechnical soil bioengineering in the areas that you referred to as that invasive? Mass, I mean, you can use species like Salex, um. Amalanki or a whole suite of warm season bunch grasses that get tied into live crib wall fashions, live staking. They become these gorgeous buffer areas that will, will reduce erosion, will create a lot of color. It would be a hundred percent native and it's incredibly resilient, and you, you can probably work around. You know, the solar arrays, I think the solar arrays, by the way, are fantastic, I love the, I love the fact that you're doing that. But I think you can combine that, you know, the geotechnical aspects, and it's being used globally, widely, even in the state of New Jersey on a number of applications. Which is great, um, and the second question I had is, I, I love the fact that you're doing. Um, I, I guess it's fourteen out of three hundred and eleven of, of the, um, parking spots will be E V. It would be really terrific if you could look at trying to attain ten percent, which is more the industry standard now. Where the construction, construction set, standard in these egregious times of climate. And that would mean, um, considering an additional perhaps, I said seventeen E V's, E V's stations.
So that's a question I would have to ask the applicant, uh.
Well, I, I think I can speak to that. If we find demand, we will absolutely consider additional application for additional E V spots. I mean, if there is a need, we want to fill it. This is a, uh, a property that is primarily used during business hours during the business week. So there will be probably at least two days of every week where there will be many open spots. But based upon the technology, the amount of time that a vehicle is required. To be at a charging station is reducing. And in order to avoid people camping in a charging station. Longer than necessary, it would be the equivalent of parking at a gas pump and filling up your car with petroleum and then leaving it there all day. Which isn't done, so in order to discourage that, there's actually. A, uh, once your vehicle is charged, there is a system that's built in that. Strongly encourages people to move their car once it's charged by charging them financially after the vehicle is charged electrically. So if there's, to bring it all to a full circle, if there's a need, we'll be happy to put in more spots with or without any requirement.
Yeah, that's, that's great, I think that's great, and I think there will be a need based on all the metrics going on, and they'll, they'll be giving away E V stations for free. As.
They're, they're a long way from that today.
Well, no, if you looked at the president's budget, they're not. Um, the second, the third question I have is, I believe, and I'm getting my directions perhaps mixed up, you mentioned that there's a. I guess, would it be in the southeast section, the place that has drainage, a storm drain or?
Uh, yeah, currently there's storm drain throughout the, the project, there's, uh, there's inlets located in the north side, along the, uh, the west side. And then, um, along the, uh, south side, and then this. Uh, uh, and then this discharges out to Morris, uh, Essex Turnpike, um.
Yeah, I, I thought, I thought I saw you point to one in the, the, the very far, like, far right. Adjacent to Morris Essex Turnpike.
Oh, here?
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a trench drain, um, uh, Martha was actually out there and I, you know, I, I apologize, I didn't look. Uh, but she says it is clogged and it's gonna be clean, we're gonna clean that out.
Uh, that's, that's a maintenance issue, that's, that's a very difficult fix.
Would that be possible for, to retrofit that into a rain garden or bioswale?
Um, it's pretty small.
Okay.
Yeah, it's picking up, um, it's picking up some, some parking lot, yeah, in, in this area here, um. Well, um, I don't know about a bioswale, because I'm not sure where the swale would go, but if anything, maybe we can, um. Introduce some kind of, um. I guess a water quality feature of some sort, like a, like, um, a water quality, you know, one of those, um. They have vaults now with trees in them, um, um.
Bioswale.
Uh, y- y- yeah, it's a, it's called, um, oh, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the company, but anyway, it, it's a, it's an engineered media. That picks up water and then it filters it and then it discharges it, um, clean water, so. Uh, yeah, we would, we, we could definitely consider it, um. Um, you know, they are, they do have a price, uh, hefty price tag on them, but we will, we will consider it.
Well, Bore Tech, Bore Technic system perhaps, but not, not a bioswale, you can do that for very reasonably, you know, very reasonable price. A lot cheaper than Bore Technics, I think that's what you might have been referring to.
Yeah.
Thank you, it would be great to consider that, and if, if, if you can consider it and follow up with Martha or whoever your contact would be, at least on. Additional E V stations and looking at, um, geotechnical soil bioengineering would be a terrific complement to the area that was. Um, ratty invasive and, and adjacent to, I guess it would be adjacent to your, um, solar array, that would be really great.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Thanks, I see, uh, Graham, our planner, has a comment or question?
Um, sure, I, I know, uh, Mayor Miggins had her hand up first, I don't know if you wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry, I called in and I thought, okay, sorry, Maggie, did I miss, call you?
No, you didn't, I was speaking, I was speaking on mute, so, I had a whole conversation with myself, um. Uh, please, would you be good enough to go back to your pictures, your picture board that show all the trees?
Sure, uh, picture board. Okay, uh, which one would you like to look at?
Well, if we look at the whole thing and then we can expand it, I just want to, please, thank you. So, um, you have one picture, I guess, it's this one here, number six, right? And that's where I think Mr. Boosak, could you enlarge that, please? Mr. Boosak that talked about N five as well, some of those trees are, look to be on the apartment building property. And some of those trees look to be on the building side property, it looks as if the fence cuts right through them, am I seeing that properly?
Uh, yeah, looks, looks, looks correct to me, mm-hmm, yeah, our survey didn't show the trees on the adjacent property, um, unfortunately, and I'm. Now I'm a little upset that I, we didn't, but it is what it is.
Well, and also, as I look at these trees, and I'm very mindful of trees, and I'm on the Environmental Commission as well, the liaison. Those trees currently are being choked by all that ivy, ivy kills trees, it doesn't help trees, it doesn't keep them healthy, it kills them. So I have an idea that these could eventually, you know, they, um, they come down from the ivy, they, they don't get enough sunlight, they're not treated well. So I, I guess I'm curious as to, um, and there is enough space in between, is there a way to, to figure out how to clean those trees up? Because they're not very healthy looking, as it were.
Yeah, I, I think I can address that. Um. The, uh, that's a maintenance item that we can have our regular, uh. Tree, tree, um, service address, and. It's a great item to add to our spring cleanup list, I, I concur a hundred percent. It, it, it does have a kind of, um, Harry Potter charm to it, but if, if what you're telling me is so, and I believe you. Then we can have that removed, we have the, the people and the resources to do that. So I, I'll bring that, I'll bring that to the attention to, of the right people and have that taken care of.
Yes, just for the trees sake, right? And then is there a way to put, um, I'm gonna go back to a privacy piece of it, because from one of the pictures in the apartments. It looked like there were windows that you could see out into this parking lot, and if you're gonna have solar panels up there, is there a way to put some types of shrubs? Native shrubs, uh, in between for some type of privacy, there just doesn't seem to be a lot of privacy in there.
Yeah, well, you know, as I said earlier, if we, if we install that six foot, do you, uh, do you see the big six foot high chain link, uh, the, the six foot high solid fence that Benihana just did? Yeah, they, they just, uh, we, we're planning on doing the same exact thing, now this one I believe is only four foot high. So we're gonna do a six foot high fence here, so anybody at this level will never be able to see the solar panels. Um, at the upper levels, really, when you're, when you're, what is it, twelve, it's gotta be at least ten or twelve feet higher than, than the ground level to the, to the first floor of the units. Which I believe is just a living room and perhaps a couple of, uh, kitchen windows, um, you're really gonna be looking straight out. I, I don't think, being at this building a setback sixty feet away, I don't think anyone looking out the window is gonna be trying to look down. Uh, usually your eyes want to go straight out, but, you know, I, I, I think, like, like I said earlier, the, the, the six foot high. For, uh, uh, solid fence would, I think would be suffice, um, and trying to plant in between these trees. Like I said, I think we're gonna really disturb root balls and really cause probably more harm than good, um, you know. I, I, I don't recommend it, but if, if the board really, really, you know, would love, would, would like us to try.
You're taking down, you're taking down trees, you have other trees that look not to be in the best of. You're taking down trees. You're taking down trees. You have other trees that look not to be in the best of health. And, and from an environmental perspective, I, I just think it's important. The one side of the building is all. As you said, invasive species, but you're not talking about replacing them with, you know, non-invasive species, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the trees that were taken down are, 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 that's hard to see here.
That, I know, I saw, I saw the forest.
Okay, yeah, they're, they're, okay.
Oh, we, we can, we can undoubtedly find a, uh. Uh, from a, both a ecological as well as an aesthetic perspective. A, a good replacement for whatever is being, uh, removed. In addition to. What we believe is a more attractive fence and certainly trying to. Uh, improve the health of the existing trees that are remaining, uh, to find other forms of cover. That would not compromise existing trees, but also add to the mature green cover in, in years to come. So. We're, we are definitely interested in finding a good fit for all of those points. It, it's in everyone's interest. To have an attractive property on both sides of the fence.
Absolutely. Thank you. I do have one other question. I don't know if this is. And in reference to the spaces, you're going from three twenty-four to three hundred and eleven. I'm curious, do any of the people that live in the apartments ever park here?
Uh, the answer to that is if we have a major storm. The, uh, residents of the apartments who do not have garage spaces. Are requested to park in the spaces underneath the building.
The fifty-nine, the podium spots, the fifty-nine podium spots?
Correct. Uh, if there's an overnight storm, so that. Snow removal and plowing can be done efficiently and quickly. And then the vehicles are brought back, but normally during non-emergency, uh, times. The parking lot is for only the uses of the tenants or the business tenants in the. Building at eight thirty Morris Turnpike.
And that's not a plan, once you're using and putting an E V, that won't be a plan to have the people in the apartments using those spots?
It, only, only if there's an emergency that necessitates. Them being clear of the perimeter road and the outdoor parking spots at eight oh six Morris Turnpike. Now. You know, the, the, the future business model seems to be. There will be, uh, brick and mortar office space, but the notion of going to an office all day, every day. Five or fi- or six days a week seems to be something we have moved on from. So the likelihood of. All of these spots being needed seems relatively unlikely, but. It is, uh. We have parking a- accommodations for the residents of Short Hills Terrace that is sufficient. And there is parking a- at the bill, at, uh, eight, eight thirty, which is sufficient.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, Graham, you can go ahead.
Sure, yeah. Um, all right, um, first, thank you, uh, for the testimony, Seating. Appreciate the, the chance to hear, uh, the plan through you in detail and the supplemental. Uh, materials, the photos are extremely helpful. Um, I just wanted to, a couple of things, um, to, to, just note and call attention to. Um, regarding the, the fence, you know, we've talked a lot about the proposed six foot fence. Um, I was going through the detail sheets and the plan set that was submitted A six and A seven, and there's not a construction detail of the, um, of this fence that's. That's provided. So I think, um, including that on the final plans, that would be helpful. Um, do you have an idea of materials that you're thinking about for that fence? Wood or vinyl?
Um, I, I've actually, I'm actually very fond of, of vinyl fencing that, uh, Benihana just did across, next to us. You know, it lasts a very long time. Um, I would probably pick a, a, a different color other than white. Um, maybe, uh, a topi color to blend in with the surrounding, but, um. You know, that's really, I think, up to the owners, you know, up to the owner, but I think a solid vinyl fence would, six foot high would. Be what I would prefer.
Okay, yeah, no, and I agree on the color, um, recommendation about a topi color or something. Uh, you know, stark white fence can show staining pretty quickly, uh, particularly files, uh, fencing can start to show the weathering. Um, other, other question I had, uh, regarding the, the proposed light pole, um, you know, addition, the new poles that you're planning. Um, will those be aligned with the parking space lines, like between spaces or are those located just on the parking area?
They're, they're, yeah, they're in, that, that's an existing one. This is a proposed one, which this is a, uh, this is where your proposal, your existing sign is for your building. Uh, that's also existing. This one will be in between the parking stalls. Um, and then, yes, they would all be in between parking stalls. That's i- ideally where you wanna put them.
Okay, so, yeah, and then just a note that, um, the pole detail should be added to the plan that.
Yeah, yeah, will do. I just noticed we were missing that, yeah, pole detail, uh, yeah.
I saw about the, the monuments on location, i- is the applicant proposing any additional signage or, you know, any changes or any updates to that or, you know, just reusing these monuments on?
Uh, Andrew, do you know? I, I don't think so.
Uh, are you referring to the sign that identifies the building and its residents?
Yeah, uh, and the tenants, yeah, the, the large.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a very controlled topic. I think that requires a different application to make any changes to that. But that is a relatively new iteration of the signage. But we're certainly open to, uh, options. If, if that's something that. The appropriate authorities would give us a license for, we would be happy to consider. It is, it is a fairly new sign. It is lit. The only additional sign is the ones that are required by the fire department. I thought that's my, might be what you were referring to. Uh, relative to the solar array.
Okay, no, the, just asking just generally if there are other changes to be located there. Um, and then I did just wanna revisit the, um, parking issue. Um, you know, so the, as, as indicated in your plans, the, uh, site as, you know, currently configured with the office space. Um, it requires two hundred and ninety-five parking spaces and you're proposing three hundred and eleven, which is a surplus of sixteen parking spaces. Um, you know, you've indicated that you have a roughly one thousand square foot increase in impervious coverage. Is there an opportunity to, you know, reduce the number of on site parking spaces and incorporate some additional landscaped areas perhaps? A couple of landscaped islands in the front area of the parking of the site, um, to, you know, kind of do a swap of impervious coverage and, you know. Help us maybe eliminate a variance, uh, you know, back of the napkin calculation of eight spaces is about, uh, twelve or fourteen hundred, uh, square feet of impervious coverage. So. You know, even if you took away eight spaces, you could kind of perhaps eliminate that need for that variance and put some previous back on the site.
Um, I will talk to the client, the applicant and see if he's willing to do that. Uh, but I, I understand your, your, your thoughts. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, um, Diane, I see you had your hand raised or was that?
Yeah, I was just gonna comment, a lot of people were talking about trees. However, the forester gave a complete report and I don't really know if it's for us to. Be telling them, suggesting what they should be planting there. The forester gave a report. That was all.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, and it's a, it's a healthy reminder that we are evaluating the application as set forth and, and being presented to us tonight. So. Um, thank you for raising that. Um, I know we've gotten into some additional testimony. Um, but, uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Patino, you mentioned you were going to continue to go further, so maybe this is a good opportunity to. Have you continue if you need.
Great, yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna put on my planner's hat now and, uh, go over each one of these variances and provide justification. Um, okay, so, um, with regards to the planet testimony, uh, stated this site is located in the B two zone district, uh, and. We, um, is regulated by the B two standards as well as general requirements of the ordinance. Uh, variance relief was discussed and waivers were discussed, um, earlier. Um, and now I'm going to list them. Uh, we have five variances which are being triggered with this proposed improvements. Uh, the first one I discussed briefly was the, um, the accessory use, uh, for this site. Uh, only allows for parking and loading areas only. Uh, there's nothing written in the ordinance that allows solar arrays. Um, which was brought up by the, by the planner. Uh, the second variance, um, is maximum impervious coverage. Uh, sixty-five percent is allowed, eighty-four percent is existing and based on the new calculation now, it looks like. It's not eighty-one, eighty-four point one percent. It's a, a fraction thereof, uh, more, uh, percentage increase of impervious. The third one is a buffer encroachment from the parking lot expansion. Uh, apparently there's a zoning section that, uh, does not permit, um, parking lots within a buffer. So that expansion that we're doing to make those parking spaces comply actually triggers a variance. Um, a fourth, the fourth one is, uh, replacing, and I don't recall, I haven't mentioned this, but replacing. Um, the retaining wall, the rear right railroad tie retaining wall along the front. Because we are changing the material type, um, uh, it triggers a variance because of the change in material type. Because, um, walls are not permitted in the front yard of, uh, at all. And only fences of four feet higher permitted. So us replacing this, uh, deteriorating railroad tie wall is also requiring. A variance. Um, and then lastly, uh, the buffer to the residential zone in the back. Um, there is a requirement to have a fifty foot buffer, uh, where currently, like I stated, fifteen point four exists. And eleven point four feet is proposed, uh, between the retaining wall and the property line or the. Solar panels and the property line. Um, these variances, in my opinion, are variances requiring C var- C two relief. Um, it is, um, in that a, uh, per- the purposes of planning as outlined in the municipal land use law. Will be advanced by granting the deviations and the benefits would substantially outweigh the detriments. Additionally, I think the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. In accordance with forty calling fifty-five D, the purposes of planning, um, I believe we are. Uh, there, the purposes of the, uh, are being advanced by allowing these deviations. What we are advancing is we are promoting the utilization of renewable energy resources. Uh, we are promoting public health, safety, morals and general welfare. And I, and the last thing we're doing is promoting a desirable visual environment. And I'm gonna explain, uh, each one and how we are promoting these. The, uh, the, 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 promoting these, uh, advance, uh, these, these. Ah, municipal land use law purposes, sorry. Um, with regards to the solar arrays, um, if. Technically, if these solar arrays were considered, uh, incidental and customary subordinate to the principal use, uh, they would be permitted on site. Uh, with this growing solar field technology, uh, you know, it is, in my opinion, leaning, uh, that. In that direction that we will be seeing more and more of these in the upcoming future. So, uh, the solar arrays. They utilize renewable energy, uh, resources that is a public benefit. Uh, they reduce, uh, energy. Usage as well as reduce carbon output. So we are, uh, promoting that. With regards to the increase in impervious coverage, uh, and the encroachment of that rear parking area in the parking lot. Um, it's, again, in my opinion, that we're providing a public safety, uh, that allows patrons to park. In a more typical sized parking space, um, that they're accustomed to. Uh, right now, fourteen feet is a little tight. People do try to park there with the smaller vehicles, but, um, ideally, uh, to be safe, they really should be. Uh, at least that seventeen feet that we're proposing, which will definitely improve public safety. Um, the, the expansion of the, um, the extension of the curb line, uh, in my opinion is the minimus. Uh, it doesn't really cause enough, uh, stormwater to really overburden any of the existing system that's there. Uh, so, but we will definitely try and work with the, um, with the township engineer and see if we can, uh, do, do something to, to improve that. Um, the curb is also located approximately fifteen to sixteen feet lower than the adjacent property. So it will not be visible from anybody other than someone stepping out of our rear of our building. Facing that direction. Um, it's a substantial, uh, distance away from the, from the, uh, public street. Um, and it's, uh, buffered in all the other sides, so, uh, seen, you know, uh, it will not be noticeable. Uh, to the general public. So it doesn't cause any harm to the general public. With replacing the railroad tie wall, uh, with a, with the six foot high modular block wall in the front yard, as I stated earlier. Uh, in the, uh, the sun, I guess, was that southwest corner of, of our site. Uh, I, I believe we are promoting a visual, a desirable visual environment, uh, seeing a deteriorated railroad, railroad tie wall. Is not really aesthetically pleasing. Uh, these modular block walls that we're proposing will be a lot nicer looking. They will last forever. Uh, well, probably more than my lifetime anyway. So, um, it's definitely a good alternative and, um. You know, the way it's, uh, located, the location where, where it's located in the front yard, granted that it's already existing. People traveling along Morris Turnpike. Now, this is a forty mile an hour road. You know, most people don't do forty miles an hours, but say you're doing forty miles an hour, come and go in, uh, uh, westbound. Sorry. I keep getting my east and west messed up. Going eastbound, um, you really do not see this retaining wall whatsoever because of the Benihana. Um, is, is a lot higher and it's all vegetated. Uh, you really don't start seeing it coming, going on a westbound direction. You really do not see this retaining wall till you get fairly close. And if you're doing forty miles an hour, you're really not gonna. Gonna notice it, but it's gonna be aesthetically pleasing because of the different material type and, um. It's gonna, it's gonna help stabilize that slope. And keep that slope sta- stabilized, uh, for the future. Um, with regards to the buffer encroachment. Uh, that we discussed in, in great detail in the rear here. I feel again, uh, the deviation can be granted. Um, you know, we are utilizing, um, renewable energy technology. Which is definitely a public benefit, as I stated earlier. Um, the solar arrays, uh, were located in, um. And designed in these locations to maximize the solar gain that this project can provide. And that's why these, if you look at the, um, detail sheet, these, um, solar rays are different shapes. And we, we really did, um, the, actually the G, uh, the, 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 um, solar company really. Put, and I did, working with him, put lots and lots of man hours, trying to figure out the best configuration. That works with the parking lot, that works with the grades, um, a- and, and this is really, uh, ideally the best. Scenario for this layout of the solar panels. Uh, so we really thought considerably about it, you know, moving these solar panels back. To where, you know, to possibly where the existing four foot, uh, you know, four foot back. All, all you're really doing is now. All, all the, um, all the, um, the columns of pill, the pillars that are holding up the structure. Are now gonna be interfering with those parking spaces, which we are trying to, uh, bring them back into compliance. So. You know, we thought it was best to do it this way. We're really minimizing as much disturbance, um, as possible. Um, with the fact that we're not removing any trees in the north, uh, other than, uh, we're just removing a few trees on the, um. The, the, the west side there. Uh, true, what else would I want to state? Um. You know, the, la- lastly, I mean, you know, our owner, um, the owner, the applicant of this property. Is also the owner of the property behind us. Um, you know, he's looked at these plans. He's well aware of where these solar panels are going to be. And he knows his residents that are there. He definitely does not want to lose any residents because of what he's proposing here. So. Um, you know, I, I'm, I'm sure, uh, we, we will, we'll, we don't have to worry about, um. Issues with the, with the neighboring property. Um, a- and, and he would work and he, he will do whatever we can to minimize any kind of. Uh, visual impairments that may be caused by these, uh, these solar panels. Um, okay, just a few more things here. Um, there are, uh, a couple of design waivers we're asking for. The parking space size, um, I know we keep dwelling on these, uh, seventeen by nine foot long stalls. The, the ordinance technically requires them to be nine by nineteen, but I bu- I believe the seventeen plus a two foot overhang. Located over the, the proposed curb will be, um, suffice. Suffice and people will start using these parking spaces more often because they're more of a typical size. Cause most vehicles would fit in that area pretty easily. So that's what we're asking for that design waiver again. And, you know, we really didn't want to encroach any further. We could have gone. Another two feet into this. Into this easement and ask for an even worse variance, but I think another two feet is really pushing it. And I think this is a good. You know, a good median. Choice that we made of, of what to, you know, taking into the environment into account and what really is going to work anyway. So with regards to the foot candle levels, the average of. We, we are proposing an average of one point six foot candle. Where no more than point five to one foot candles are permitted. The deviation of point six foot candles from this standards, in my opinion, is really the minimus. The, the proposed additional lighting will promote public safety without adversely affecting the adjacent properties. You know, these lights are. Located underneath the canopies. Not visible at all from the residents and, and all sides. I, I think having that little bit extra light is really not going to affect anything. If we try to lower that foot candle and try to get that average down, it will probably. Lighting is not a perfect science. So when you, when you just one thing, you might actually hurt something else. So by trying to lower the average, now what's going to happen is your uniformity ratio, which is my opinion, most important. Which is basically your average to your. To your minimum. That's more important when designing lighting, other than this one. And I want to talk about the max to min uniformity ratio in a second. The uniformity max average to minimum is more important because that's what. When you're driving through a site, it, your eyes, if, if that uniformity ratio is too high. You know, greater than seven, I believe. It, it really, your eyes can't adjust. So you're going to have those highs and lows and your eyes are constantly going to want to try and adjust with these. Different light levels. So. You know, that one point six is really not going to affect anything. So, and then the other one, the, the other design waiver of maximum to, to minimum uniformity ratio. You know, we're proposing eleven point eight to one ratio where the ordinance. Says it's ten to one. Again, this is really, all that really tells you the max to min ratio is telling you that one side of the site. You have probably, you have a five foot candle and on the other side of the site, you have a point one foot candle. And it, it's just more for the designer to know, like, hey, you have a low spot, you have a hot spot. Be careful, you know, it's, it's more of a design guidelines than, you know, or, or, you know, the stuff to look at. But uniformity ratio that we're proposing here is a four point oh, four point oh to one. And that is really an optimal design for this site. So I, I believe those waivers from the lighting are, can be granted and they're really not going to affect. The overall layout of this site. And I think it's going to be a really, really nice site because currently today, the lighting on site is a little. On, on, on the dark side. So this is going to be a considerable improvement. The applicant has invested a tremendous amount of money with this solar energy. I, I, I really handed to him. He did the roof ones a few, quite a few years ago. And now he's just keeps going and going and going, which I, I think I commend them for that. So I'm going to stop talking now and I think I'm done.
Okay, uh, thank you. So does anybody have any questions regarding that planning testimony? Maggie, are you raising your hand? Or I don't know if you just, okay, no, sorry. I see.
Mr. Machino, you, you talked about the positive criteria for the variances. But unless I missed it, I didn't hear you discuss any of the negative criteria in terms of. No substantial detriment to the public good and no substantial impairment of the zoning ordinance and zoning plan. So if you could. Unless I missed it and you did it. Can you just supplement your testimony to deal with, you know, how these variances that you're requesting? Does not have. Or is not substantially detrimental to the public good or. Imperative zoning ordinance and zoning plan.
Yeah, yeah, well, kind of trying to imply it, but yeah, I mean, a lot of this stuff. A lot of our proposed variances are located. In locations where it's not actually visible to the general public. So they're really, in my opinion, there's not going to be any negative impact by, by doing these. You know, the only. You know, with. Yeah. So, so like I said, the accessory use of the park, of the solar panels, I think we're promoting. The, the, the use of renewable energy, but the negative, really is no negative impact. These. You know, right now. The public will all looks at a, you know, we'll just take the residents behind us. They'll, they're looking down, if they even do look down to a parking lot full of cars, striping. Now they're just going to be looking down at. You know, it's going to look nicer because you're not going to see the cars, you're not going to see the lights, you're not going to see anything. It's going to actually look. Fairly dark at night. So there's no detriment to the public. In any of these that I, that I, I can see. Again, I talked about visibility of these retaining walls along, along the Morris Turnpike. And again, i- i- by. By mitigating the rear by installing a solid fence. I, I think again, we, there's no negative impact on the surrounding neighbors or. Or the public. And, you know, there's no substantial detriment to. To the public good. Does that? Clarify?
Well, I look at your testimony now. You know, the, i- if you, if you are concluding that, that's, you know, that's, that's fine. And the other question I had with regard to the waivers. It's a similar, there's a standard in the, in the MLUL that the, the. Meeting, the, the. Design standard is either impracticable or will evoke. Or result in undue hardship for the. For the applicant. There's no negative criteria. It's just, you know, what, so I guess the question is what, what's the hardship or the. Impracticability of complying with the. Land development standards that you are seeking a waiver from. I, I, my, my point is, I think. Context of the statute as opposed to. You know, we're not going to put it into the, into the statute. It's, it's up to you to demonstrate what. Meet the standards that are in the statute and not, not have us try to figure that out. So I'm asking you to do that.
Okay, gotcha. So with, with regards to the, the design waiver for the parking spaces, I guess the hardship. To try and comply with that is the. I- is the fact that now you're going to be disturbing the, the steep slopes. And it's really not. Possible. Well, it's possible, but. It's not, it's not practical to do. The seventeen foot parking spaces are, are sufficient for cars. There is a. You know, there's, yeah, the, the steep slopes really is, is a big, is the big trigger why that, that cannot be. That cannot comply with. With regards to the lighting, I, I mean, I stated earlier. You know, we, we could try to comply. I, I have a feeling that. By trying to fix one, it's. You know, th- th- this criteria that is in the zoning ordinance to try and meet all three. Is very, very difficult. And I, 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 I know we've had trouble in the past on other projects in town, trying to comply with all three. Criteria or all the criteria of the lighting. But a- a- again. You know, i- it's, by fixing one, you're going to be making another one worse. So I think. I, I'm fairly confident that to try and comply. Would, would be a hard, it's a hardship. Because we just can't get. All of them to be within the required ranges. I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to say. Again, i- it's, it's very minor in nature, the foot candle readings. It's very subjective and it's, it's really hard for everyone's eyes different. So. These changes in these minor deviations. From, you know, ten, ten to one ratio to eleven point eight is really insignificant. It's, 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 you're not gonna, not gonna see it. Or notice it. Okay, does that, does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yep. And I see Maggie has her hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a point of clarification back to. Jeffrey Pilot, the Foresters memorandum. He said after site inspection, he determined there was one tree, ten inches in diameter slated for removal. And that the tree was in poor condition, but this is three trees. Yes. I just wanted clarification on that. And then my second question is, will the panels throw off any bright layers? I'm just curious. Will the panels throw off any bright? At any uncertain time?
Very, very good question. I don't believe they do. They are set at a very flat angle, which is approximately seven degrees. And they're basically reflecting straight back up. There, there's no way it'll reflect to the residents to the rear, because they're actually aiming in the opposite direction anyway. So they would never reflect that way. But. No, they're, they're, they're very flat angles and they, they will not reflect.
Can you show us what they look like? I see you popped.
Yeah, I was, I popped into that picture. You know, I just, I, I had an idea, I had a, a, a thought. That perhaps somebody might want to just see samples. And I, I went online. Oh my God, where is it? No, board two. Here we go. Okay. So now, here we go. This will be. Photo board number two, which will be exhibit A ten. And basically I just really, I, I went, and these are example photos. They're strictly examples of solar arrays. All photos taken from Google Images on three, three, twenty two, which was, you know, about five hours ago, I did it. So basically this is, this is what they're going to look like. I, I, I mean, you can see they're of a steel structure. They do have a substantial column holding them up. You know, there is a tremendous amount of design that goes into these regarding, you know, solar gain, structural integrity. And, and everything. And, you know, the ones in the rear that are going to be by the residential lots are going to be similar to this. It's like a cantilevered one. These are going to be located. The, uh, uh, on, along the. The, the, the northerly property line right next to the ones to the, that are north of those. And that's it. And then this is what they look like. So they have, you know, lots of clearance, you know, for the, the minimum fourteen foot high. You know, again, no, no, these are located on the side in the rear of our building. So not a lot of people are really going to see them. Other than the one on the side, you might see it for a, a brief period doing forty miles an hour in the westbound direction. Of, of Morris Turnpike. But other than that, they're really, you know, you, you, you're going to see this, this view. From Morris Turnpike. It's because this, this one's the one that comes along the side of the building. Said, help you, I mean, these, they're just photos. You know.
Great, thank you. Ed, you had a follow up?
Yeah. So I know that Mr. Lane referred to, I, I, he mentioned three people. I, one of them was, I, I believe the solar expert. And I was wondering if we were going to be hearing testimony from him. Regarding the, the very question that the mayor raised, that, that is, you know, I mean, these are nice, but. I don't know that these are the ones that are being installed. So I, I'm asking Mr. Wayne if he was going to present Mr., Mr. Chafin, Chafe Chafkin, I think was the name.
We, we arranged to have him available, even though. Is in a land far away from a longstanding prior plan. If he can be, if he can be reached, I think he's on the call. If he. If he can be reached, he should let us know so that you can ask him any questions you have. Jeff, are you there?
I think it's important for the, and, and I'll defer obviously to the board, but.
We arranged for him to be available. That's why, that's why he's here.
Okay, so he, he's going to testify, I guess is the.
If, 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 if I can. There we are. Good. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, that, that, that's fine. Because I think, you know, this application is to install. The solar panels and, and while. Mr. Vecino has talked about the engineering aspects of the wall and. So generally where these things are located, I think the board's entitled to know. What is this going to look like? And, you know, what, what, what are these panels going to look like as opposed to, well, here's what. You know, here's an illustration of several different ways in which this is done.
Absolutely. That's why we, that's why we arranged to have him here.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I just want to just sort of procedurally, we haven't completed our testimony. Perhaps we're getting close to it from Mr. Vecino. I will want to offer the public the opportunity to ask questions. So if we'd like to move. Maggie, if you'd like to have the question answered, we certainly can do that. If we'd like to sort of co- complete the one part. With Mr. Vecino and then move on to Mr. Chavkin next, which is, which is my preference, just so that we don't.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Great. So Mr. Chavkin, hold tight. Thank you for being with us and appreciate it. We're just gonna, let's try to complete this part. And then we'll move to the next one.
We stopped the screenshot.
Graham, I see you. Sure. Graham, you have a question?
Yeah, just before we leave, wrap up Mr. Vecino's testimony, I just had one question, kind of. I apologize. This is jumping back to the engineering testimony that he gave. Mr. Vecino, you mentioned that there would be a phased construction approach to the retaining wall construction. Indicating that the rear retaining walls would be completed first and that the western property line walls would be completed second. I just wanted to see if you could talk through the impact that that phasing would have on the other related site improvements, particularly given that. The electric vehicle charging stations are at the base of that wall. Will that, you know, delay installation of those features? Will that delay paving and striping of the parking lot or any other improvements related to the site?
Yeah, I mean, the, the only thing that could probably they'll hold up is the charging stations. But, like I said, it, it was just a, and I thought because of the. Extremely high expense of replacing these walls. We, we wanted to have the option to be able to build them in phases. It, it may be that the, the applicant gets a good price and he does it all at one time. But. I, I see, I see what you're saying. Yeah, the, the. The electric charging stations, they would have to be protected. When these second phase walls are built. But yes, we would like to still provide phasing for them. I don't think they're going to affect anything else with regards to. You know, striping or. Building the, the solar arrays.
Okay. Yeah. So really just think, just features located at the base of the retaining wall. So just think it's important for the board to, to be cognizant of the fact that there may be some delays. And execution of the full site plan. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions from the planning? For, for Mr. Vecino. Okay. So members of the public, if you're in the attendee, you can use the raise hand function at this point. I see we have one already. This is if you have questions for Mr. Vecino, not a testimony, just to, to state your opinion on the project and not any questions for. The solar panels just yet. So I believe. He's being brought in. Thank you. Your name is Reed Kim. If you could turn your camera on and you should be able to. Hit yourself and then. And have your question for Mr. Vecino.
Hi there. Thanks. Thanks for letting me have a question. My name is Reed Kim. I'm with the Environmental Commission in Melbourne. And, yeah, the, the questions that I thought were relevant were already asked by other members of, by the planning board members regarding the. Some of the invasive species treatment and the EV parking places and plantings and so forth. So I appreciate your receptivity. To looking into that. I, I did have one question and maybe you touched on it was the. I I did have one question and maybe you touched on it, was the um, I guess, the impervious cover. Uh, it's a small area that's gonna be added. I I was just wondering if you had, if there, if there a greater amount of the parking lot will be also looked at, uh, maybe not. And if so, um, have you looked into technologies that might, uh, you know, have like a porous asphalt or or some other sort of treatment that would, you know, enhance the um, the runoff management there? And then the other question I had um was my last one, I was just curious, will will the revenue from the project uh come simply from the sale of of um power into the grid? Or will there also be a um, some sort of a carbon offset sale um part of the project? Thank you.
Okay, I defer the last question to our um solar, solar professional. Um, I'm not sure how they're gonna handle the uh, the, the, the energy produced from this. Um, with regards to um the uh, the added impervious coverage, no, we did, we did not look into uh, you know, pervious pavers and stuff like that. Uh, you know, that area was very, very small, in my opinion. I I apologize if many think it's a lot larger. Um, even that, even the one thousand square feet to me is not significant, but um, that's my personal opinion. Uh, but we will, um, I we, I could look into it, I I definitely look into it, um, pro- provided maybe pervious pavers along that increased area to try and provide some infiltration. It it makes sense to put it there, it's a flat area, it'll pick up the water and maybe drain down in on into the ground. Yeah, I'll I'll look into that. I'll work with the um township engineer uh with that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, those are answers to your question, thanks, Mr. Kevin. Uh, if anybody else from the public has questions for Mr. Ficino, now would be the time to raise your hand. Okay. Seeing none, um, thank you, uh, and Mr. Lane, if you wanted to call your next.
Yes, uh, Jeff Chafkin uh is with. Is it GeoSolar? I don't, I don't have all my notes in front of me, but.
Geoscapes.
Geoscapes Solar, uh, he is uh an expert in this area. And I will defer to his testimony to answer the uh questions that this panel has, thank you.
If you just raise your right hand. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing, be the truth, all truth, kind of the truth?
I do.
Your name, spell your name for the record, please.
Uh, Jeff Chavkin, C-H-A-V, as in Victor, K-I-N, as in Neil.
Thank you. Um, so Mr. Chavkin, I uh, I think just an overall quick description of your involvement with the design of the solar array. And then um, and then following that, I'd I'd like to open it up just for questions that haven't been answered that have come up.
Sure, uh, first of all, I just wanna note that I raised my kids in Short Hills and my partner and I both started our company in Short Hills. So uh, I was there for twenty-something years, just moved out a few years ago. Um, uh, my company started in two thousand eight. We uh, been working with the Bernie family for some time. The apartments have solar arrays on them, it's an operational system. In addition, the uh, the build, the existing building, if you can see, actually shows up in the picture that we do have panels on that building as well. And um, they're very dedicated to trying to create clean energy to meet all their usage. So that's why we needed to go uh with the carport solution, we did it as a two-phase project. So we're in the second phase of that. Um, we have a combination of engineering on this project. The solar carports are actually manufactured and engineered by the solar carport company. So um, we also did soil studies uh before designing the carports to make sure they could support the type of uh, of uh, basis that we, that we have. I I think they're uh straight footings, not spread footings, because of the soil was able to support that. We actually are using three different uh constructs on the site, the very back. Um, and by the way, I, Anthony, I did send you guys um a picture of, that includes a sample of what these actual carports look like on one property. We actually have one property as all three of them, I don't know if it's possible for you guys to pull it up. If not, that's fine, uh, in terms of what they look, I mean, they do look similar to to what you're seeing. Um, and uh, somebody knew, asked about uh reflection. We actually have a system that is literally on the approach of the East Hanover Airport. So uh, that was a big consideration they had at that time. They do not, they do not cast a, a, a glare or anything from them, they actually absorb the light. So it's not, it is an issue for the airport and it certainly shouldn't be an issue for the tenants in the apartments, which I think are the only. I I actually don't believe they can even see now because they are pitched away from them. So I don't even know, they may see one edge of the carports, but I believe that's all they would even see from where they are. Some, ask, uh, any questions you guys have, please feel free to ask.
Great, thank you. Um, did anybody wanna ask any specific follow-up questions regarding the designer and installation of the solar panels? Uh, guess done?
I just wanted to bring up Mr. Rem's question about uh how the cost was being handled and where the power was going or, or I've forgotten it exactly, but I wanted to make sure that didn't get lost.
Um, not trying to follow in the question, sorry, guess on.
Uh, I I think Mr. Rem, uh, just recently, he came on uh from the attendee side. He asked the uh, I don't know, pricing structure or uh, are you generating revenue from it? Or is it just being, is all the power going into the building? Is there any surplus or anything like that?
Got you, so um, it's a net meter project, which means it's connected to the grid and directly connected to the Barney's usage on that property. So the, the usage of that building determines how big the solar system can be. So we look at it on an annual basis, so the system is designed to meet, I think it's something like eighty-five percent of their annual usage. However, at any given point in time, that system can be producing more energy than they need at that given point in time. There's actually a revenue-grade net meter, so the meter spins in both directions, we're interconnected with the utility. So that energy goes back to the grid. And then when they need it, say, at night in the winter, if it's snowing, if it's raining, then it gets, it's, it's, then they take that credit and they use that credit back. Um, you know, on their bill. At the end of the year, I would think they would be less than a, a net producer. And the way it's incentivized in New Jersey um with net metered solar is you can't build the system to meet more than your last year's usage. Um, given the fact that they are, we did not include the EV chargers when we sized the system. We sort of sized the system to what um both Seon and his father felt was aesthetically what they were looking for. Well, obviously, we could have added carports closer to Morse Avenue as well. Um, they determined that they didn't want to have that visual from the main street, so we didn't add it there. So when we add all the uh EV chargers, depending on how how much they're used, it will definitely be even, they'll be even less. So they're gonna be using definitely all of the energy that's produced, maybe not at the exact point it's produced, but eventually they will be using all the energy that's produced. I didn't hear a question?
Thank you.
And they own it, by the way, they own the.
Um, Sayglo. Diane, you're muted.
Oh, okay, sorry. So I like the fact that you're being environmentally caring. I also think there's a benefit no one spoke about, that you're protecting the cars. I know if I go to Summit Medical Group or Rutgers or anywhere, it's great having a carport, that your car is protected from the sun, the rain, the snow, that's a benefit. And that you've just testified that the adjoining apartment will not be seeing it. You also said there's no glare, so I think these are all positives, so I'm glad you were able to get on tonight.
Well, thank you, Diane, I appreciate that. Um, we've installed at the Wilshire Grand and the Friendship Circle carports at both locations, which also have those dual benefits by the catering area, where we have all the carports where they can park under them, especially in bad weather when you have events. So um, we also do a lot with car uh, car man, not manufacturers, car dealers, dealerships. So they're also really um being proactive in putting in carports with EV chargers, because obviously the electric car industry is semi-exploiting. So um, one other thing I just thought of, um, somebody mentioned that there's maybe more car uh spaces than are needed and that they would put in maybe some planting or something. I just wanna bring up that if, as we add car chargers that the public can access, that's spaces that the public's gonna access that will not be available to the building when the public is to access them. They're allowed to access them during off hours. So they'll actually need those extra spaces to accommodate the EV chargers.
And if I could add one more thing, a mile up the road to Short Hills Mall, they have, this was approved a few years ago and they have a lot of carport, so um, solar panels, so it's right up the road.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for the additional context, and Mr. Boo back?
Uh, yes, what, what's the uh useful life of these uh solar panels that are being installed? So the panels themselves have a twenty-five-year warranty with a degradation rate of point five percent per year. So they're guaranteed to be uh between eighty-two and eighty-eight percent efficient twenty-five years from now. And is there a, a removal plan um that has been uh established uh at the end of the useful life of these panels? That's a great question, it's actually something that our company is very involved in and um we're a member of a national buying intellectual cooperative called Amicus. Um, we're just starting to see kind of end-of-life of systems um reach their end of life. And uh, we personally, I just took a system off a, a client in Livingston and we donated the project between us and a company out in uh, in Colorado. We donated them to an Indian reservation, um, we donated the labor to take them off and ship them. They donated the labor to reinstall them at the Indian reservation. So the answer is, in twenty-five years, they're still productive. Um, there's going to be a lot of end-of-life systems and it's very, it's something that's very important to us to figure out. Um, Amicus as a group and use solar or is, how do we, what, what do we do with these, especially if they're still useful? How can we help, there's so many areas in our country that are not served by electricity. Uh, and I guess, let me follow up on that a little bit. So if, if the useful life is twenty-five years, but they are at the end of twenty-five years, you know, eighty or eighty-five percent uh, or, you know, seventy-five percent uh operational, so to speak. Uh, do, does the arrangement that the property owner has with the solar company terminate at that time and they're taken down? Or, you know, if they're still working, I guess my, my question better stated is if they're still working, why wouldn't anyone take them down and try and get rid of them if they're working at eighty percent capacity? Right, and and I'm happy to have an off uh, off-grid conversation with you about, you know, thirty different scenarios of why people do the different things that they do. But to your point, uh, for the Bernie situation, they own it, so that we have no involvement other than to operate and maintain it. We are selling it to them, we're installing it, we have our own O and M department that will help them operate and maintain it, um, capture all the, the, the um S-Rex and T-Rex or whatever the renewable energy program is in New Jersey for, for far various projects. But they're not leasing or they're not doing a power purchase agreement, they own the system. So it is to their discretion, who knows, you know, uh, my friend who we donated the, the uh, system, PSCNG bought his building, they said, we're taking down the building, we don't want source. So PSCNG said, just take this whole system off, so we did and we dedicated and donated it. So there's various reasons why people would uh choose not to uh continue the life of that system. They could add a, a floor on a building, they could, somebody else could buy the property and wanted to turn it into apartments. Um, so there's, there's lots of different reasons and, and and there are other uses. We can take the panels off, they're ballasted, they're not even attached to the building, the carports are attached to a carport. Obviously, you can, you can take them off and use them somewhere else as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, other questions for Mr. Chavkin? Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, I'm sorry if I missed this, how many kilowatt, um, kilowatts will the, the array generate?
Um, I actually, the numbers in front of me, but um, I don't know, do you guys have it? I can look it up if you want, you wanna know just from the arrays themselves?
Um, yeah, and I'm, I'm sort of curious, are you gonna be keeping, you obviously will or somebody will, tabs on the return on investment? Be, because that would be very um, I think, important information for the township to have, because it encourages other businesses to do it, because it's a good thing.
Well, we've certainly been installing in Melbourne um residences since two thousand eight. Um, we've done, trying to think if there's many, any businesses that are in Melbourne or in Short Hills proper, but certainly many, many, many in the area, we have about five hundred systems in the state. Um, and all have their return characteristics based on azimuth, pitch, um shade characteristics, the equipment that you're using. Um, all of the, your exact latitude, longitude, looking at thirty years of weather data, et cetera. But in general, um, for a commercial client, you're looking at a three-to-four-year payback of their system. And they continue not only to create clean energy, but also to be incentivized on top of that for fifteen years right now in the current program in New Jersey.
Thank you.
Uh, and I'm sure Mr. Bernie and and Seon will uh, will hold us to task to make sure that that system does produce what they expect it to produce. Um, and we actually produce reports for all of our clients. Um, we show expected versus actual, and we have our own O and M division to support all of our existing systems.
I know the um, the facility, you know, I had an extensive tour a couple of years ago, the NRG facility in West Windsor. They've got a really spectacular solar array that has, you know, carports and bio swales. They capture all the rainwater from the carports and the roof gardens that get rerouted and it's all self-contained. And it's a really great, it's a great model. And this, this sounds like a, you know, certainly a, a huge benefit to um what many of us are trying to do in Melbourne. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate your, your, I'm sorry to mean.
Are there any other?
I was just gonna say, Mark, um.
Go ahead, Mr. Chavkin, I'm sorry.
I'm out west, sorry about that. Um, Mark, there is a uh, we did an installation at the Willow School, which is actually the largest living building. Um, I have encouraged you to take a look at that and um, if you ever wanna take a tour there, I'm happy to arrange that, it's a pretty amazing facility.
I think, and I believe it's LEED Platinum also.
It's on steroids, it's actually called an LBC, Living Building Challenge, it's way above LEED Platinum.
Okay, in uh, interest of advancing our, our evening, um, any other questions from the board for Mr. Chavkin? Okay, any uh members of the audience who have some questions for Mr. Chavkin, go ahead and raise your hand. Uh, I see we have one. And Eileen, you can bring her on over. Great, uh, Jean Pasternak, you should be with us now.
Yes, hi, uh, good evening, Jean Pasternak, three, four, two, Hobart. I just have one question um for Mr. Chavkin, wh- where is the equipment manufactured that is installed in the solar arrays?
You know, I know we changed the, is this SunPower uh Seon? You guys recall, is it, is it SunPower system? So I know there was a change in the, in the, we have, we have a combination, I think, of both uh SunPower panels and Hama panels. SunPower panels were manufactured in the Oregon facility uh in the US and some in uh, in uh Mexicali. Uh, the Hama panels are Korean panels.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pasternak, okay. Uh, any other questions from members of the public for Mr. Chavkin? Okay, seeing none, um, thank you for taking time tonight to be with us, sorry for interrupting if it's a vacation.
Not at all, thank you for your time, I really appreciate this, this is a volunteer board, I'm well aware of, so appreciate you guys being on, so late.
Thank you. Um, okay, so we turn it back to you, Mr. Lane.
Well, I, I am in awe of the interest and the dedication shown by everyone. Uh, certainly, I appreciate all the work that was done on behalf of this project. Uh certainly, I appreciate all the work that was done on behalf of this project by our engineer. Uh by Mr. Chafkin and. I uh hope that you'll give us a favorable consideration if there's anything left. Uh that you would like us to consider. We try to be a very forward-thinking organization and we are lifetime residents and business owners in this community. So we have a major stake in seeing it thrive and seeing best possible use and best possible appearance of this community. So we're here. We just want you to tell us what you would like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Um I think uh the board certainly has a few items that we should be discussing. Um I know that our council um lost internet connection, so I would like to give him a moment to rejoin. Um worst case scenario, he just, he did send me a text. So. Sorry, okay, um so while we do that and before we have any final deliberations, I would like to take this moment to. See if any members of the public wanted to provide testimony. So this is not if you had any questions for anybody, but just wanted to make a statement on record. Um now would be the appropriate time um for any attendees. To make any public comment regarding this application. Okay, seeing none. I know. Ed will be trying to log back in, but um. I guess I open it to uh our board, then let's discuss any sort of outstanding questions, concerns, considerations. Um you know, I think. We we we're sort of of two minds. Um one, we are, you know, as a board, we're tasked to evaluate the application in front of us and and sort of not redesign it and replan it. Um we do have an applicant in front of us who is saying, tell us what you want and we want to work with you. So we do appreciate that as well. Um so let's try to strike the balance between um evaluating the application in front of us. And if we, if there are certain uh changes or items to request, um we can. In the meantime, um Eileen, if I can request, I believe Susan Crawford has been on and listening, um who's also part of our council. Um so if we can bring her in, if she's available, um then we can at least have her present that sort of on our panel with us. But did anybody have any sort of additional items for consideration or inclusion? Um that would be heard or discussed, that they just want to make sure are reiterated or confirmed? And did anybody have any sort of thoughts or reactions? You know, I think we've heard um the five variants as being requested. My personal level of comfort with four of them is is fine and and I understood the testimony. Um I'm still a little hung up on the impervious surface um amount because it is already so much over. Oh, I had my notes with me. I think it's. Was eighty, well, and I don't know, I guess. If I heard it correctly tonight, the calculation might have been confirmed not to be accurate because it it was a point one percent. But when we kind of did the math, it wasn't just a hundred feet, it's a thousand feet. Um is that, Mr. Lane, am I characterizing that correctly? Or I guess we can confirm with Mr. Faschino.
Uh I I think that was. Rough calculation that was made um during the course of this hearing, but I I think Mr. Faschino is best, is best suited to respond.
Sure.
Yeah, um i- if you could give me a few minutes, I'll actually get the exact number.
Perfect.
Um I'm I'm on my computer now. Sorry, I should have been doing that. I should have been doing that.
Yeah, that's okay. No, it's okay. We didn't ask. Um but just, you know, as a note to all of us. Sixty five percent is what, you know, our zoning code requires as the maximum. Eighty four is what's there. So you know, again, what's there is there and it's there. It's not on them to have to fix that or 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 reduce it, but they are increasing it. And if we could get more towards closer to. What is required, given the the surplus of parking that they will now have. Um I I I do think that is a compelling question. Ed, welcome back and thank you, Susan, for jumping in as well and as Ed.
Hey, thank you. I I apologize. Um I I think this is press from Mr. Wayne. When I was looking through our engineers' report, she talked about the poor condition of the parking lot. And the perhaps worsening condition of it um from the various activities that are going to occur. And she made some recommendations and I was uh interested in knowing what the applicant's uh response to that was. Because we didn't go through the reports or Mr. Faschino didn't go through the reports, which is fine. I don't mean that critically. But um there there were some outstanding issues there that um. I think should be addressed for the.
Well, a a lot of the uh the observations concerning the condition of the surface of the parking lot. Are absolutely on the money. Um and they, the explanation is is very simple and very practical. We have been trying to get this project together for several years. Uh we had some stop and go in terms of being able to focus on it. You might have heard of this pandemic. Uh so we got distracted a lot. There were a lot of other things that were coming up that prevented us from giving this the kind of attention that it really deserves and needs. In order to be able to move forward. So consequently, we have had several bids to resurface the parking area and restripe it. But we made a determination to defer that so that we could get this prize, this real goal of. Trying to be twenty first century forward. Trying to reduce a carbon footprint and trying to be ready for. The twenty first century in a meaningful way. Before we put more blacktop over a parking lot that was originally designed probably forty or fifty years ago. So all of these points that the town engineer made regarding the surface absolutely confer. This is. Uh something that we want to do. And based upon my understanding of the timeline for the work that would be done. I believe that the staging would be first. Address the major construction changes that would be required to install the solar array. Install the uh improved retaining wall that we've all observed is uh not retaining a whole lot at this moment. And after that is done, that would be the best window to put down the new surface. Because if you do it out of sequence, you're basically going to be disturbing something that you just installed. Uh if there's other points with regard to that report that you would like us to address. Either I can respond. I have the principal who has been watching and and listening and sharing ideas with everything that's going on this evening. As well as our engineer uh that we can address. But yeah, I I concur a hundred percent with regard to the quality of the surface of the parking lot. But that is our reason for deferring this maintenance. There has been spot improvement as needed as we go along because we want it to be safe. There's no suggestion that it's a dangerous situation. It's just not aesthetically pleasing. The final uh visual, the final product that we see here will be a massive improvement. Both in terms of uh being responsible to our environmental community as well as our aesthetics. This will be a major step toward improving the appearance of this property, appearing uh and improving its functionality.
Thank you.
Ed, if I could just add in here um to Mr. Lane, it's Martha Callahan. I'm the one that made that recommendation. I just think that um, you know, you acknowledged that the parking lot, the asphalt is in pretty rough shape. I've been watching road crews paving roads now for over twenty years. And I know these, they want to get in, they want to get out, they want to, they have their milling machines, they're working very quickly. And you have some pretty sophisticated solar arrays and structures in place. It'll be difficult to work around those milling and paving a parking lot. I just thought um might be easier to do that before those arrays get put into place.
I I believe that the timeline is to first do the necessary changes in the retaining wall because that's going to.
That would go first, definitely.
That would be, that would be first. And then depending on what the experts in this area say. I concur, I would rather put a beautiful new stanchion and structure over a perfect surface. Than to try to have them mill and pave around it. But again, I'm going to defer, I'm going to defer to the experts, the people who really do this. But I I think your point is probably spot on.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Other items for consideration. Um Ed, I I know you were um bounced off momentarily, but we um, I don't know what you caught, but we had asked the public for any. Questions for Mr. Chapkin. We got those and then we opened it up for any public comment and did not receive any at that time. Now we are in our hopefully final deliberations and discussion. Um we're asking for any sort of remaining outstanding items and then um. We'll look to move on this application. So did anybody have any further concerns or?
I'm sorry, may may I, may I speak to clarify the impervious coverage increase? Just for the record, I I I did a new calculation. It's a seven hundred and fifty six square feet uh increase. So we're going from eighty four percent to eighty four point five percent for the record.
Okay, I I apologize. Do that. No, thank you for making that correction uh for the record. And um Mr. Faschino, you mentioned, you know, the idea of, you know, possibly removing some of the, what would then be surplus. Uh parking spots, whether it's a street or or elsewhere. I don't know if you, and of course, I don't know if you've conferred with anybody else on that.
You know what, you know what I I think would be a better thing uh is in that area where we're increasing the parking area. Um I think we could just use a pervious paver of some sort. Um I I I think would do. It it would do, it would basically act like a uh like grass, right? The water will go right through it, perk into the ground and um. To be reduced, so.
You mean at the very back of the property?
Yeah, yeah, right, you know, we're 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 expanding the parking lot.
But isn't that covered? Isn't that going to be covered by a solar array? Like would, no water would hit it, right?
Sorry, yes. Uh yes, that would be covered. That would be covered. Um yes, that would be covered.
Anyway, I mean, once, once water hits a a, an impervious surface flat. It goes wherever the crown leads it. So putting in the the pavers. From my experience, and I'm not as qualified as some of our engineers are. Would have the functionality of encouraging better runoff and better drainage. It would, it would still have a value.
Not, not if it's covered.
Yeah, not, I I don't think the water would be hitting that that pavement. That was the point, that that's the covered part.
Point out that oh, there is a carport-like quality to solar arrays. It is not like having a garage. There it is, they are, there's spaces between them. You will still get moisture coming in, precipitation coming in from sides. And sometimes even between where the panels meet. It is, it is not intended to be a roof.
Yeah, well, it it would, there will be actually some, some stormwater that that runs off from the hillside. Uh because the area that's not covered between the, that eleven foot area that is not covered. Um will, will let the water sheet flow down the hill over, cascade over the retaining walls and eventually end up in the parking lot. And actually, it'd probably be uh, it'll eliminate any kind of uh uh seepage out of the side of the uh. Out of the side of the embankment, the steep slopes there. So actually, you you could put it there and it will pick up.
Creating more concerns than alleviation here, but thank you. Um yeah, no, I I hear what you're saying. Um Mr. Matz, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm out of curiosity, what's the permeability of the subsurface soils? Because the the pavers won't do much good if the permeability is, you know, if it's a clayey soil or whatever. And I I thought I I I saw um, you know, the soils in one of the reports and I don't know if it was yours.
Uh no, that was not. No, we didn't do any soil studies here. Uh so I do not know the underlying soils.
Okay, so you might want to check that before you go forward with um permeable pavers.
Okay, um and Graham, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to note from a desk, a definition perspective that, you know, the definition of lot coverage, um you know, with respect to impervious. Um includes accessory uses, buildings or any other structure. So the placement of a pervious surface beneath an impervious structure above um would not, you know, provide any deviation or reduction. Um in the previous coverage calculation per the ordinance definition.
Thank you for clarifying that. It's a good point, right? So so putting impervious, you know, putting pervious favors below the solar array doesn't. Take away from the fact that there's a solar right there, yeah.
There could be other opportunities, though, for pervious pavers. In that we're going to be milling and resurfacing the parking lot in its entirety. And there will be parking lot that will not have any solar array over them. I mean, we we, you have a very big square of the parking lot. So i- if if the paving contractors and the engineers and others think that that would be of value. If it would aid the permeability of the surface, I think that could be integrated into. A a future resurfacing of the lot.
Great, um I I think that's a a strong consideration, yeah. But I don't want to speak on behalf of the whole board, but I I do think that. That would make sense.
I I'm I'm a little bit, I I I'm sorry. I know I missed a little bit of the meeting, but I don't think my missing that portion has an effect on what I'm about to say. But if, but if it does, please jump in. I I'm just a little bit confused about the application. I, we got the application in. It was to put in solar panels to uh, we we uh, we do the retaining walls, remove the railroad tie walls. Uh and replace them with uh the material walls that we talked about. Uh we're, we're now talking about milling and repaving and making, putting in impervious, potentially put, potentially putting in impervious. Uh uh pavers or other impervious material in what is now um. Impervious area. Is that part of the application? Is that part of the approval? Is the applicant saying they're going to do it? There's a lot of, there was a lot of, well, we'll consider this and we'll consider that, we'll consider this and we'll consider that, but I don't know. Yeah, I can't do resolutions that say the applicant will consider this and consider this or consider this. What we're, we have an application before us.
The the.
Well, let's finish this, Elaine. The application is is either going to be approved as it has been submitted. Uh or if there's going to be modifications, those modifications have to be part of the action that the board takes. It it or or else we have sort of an open-ended um approval where we give the applicant some general approvals. And then they can go out and and I'm not sure what they're doing, what they, what they can't do and how Martha or Eileen or anybody else in the township is going to. Be able to monitor this to see, well, are you consistent with what the approvals are or are you not consistent with what the approvals are? So. I I understand this, Elaine.
Okay, um first of all, I appreciate we have probably gone into other topics, but I believe that this is integrated. Uh we're taking a building that was designed some time ago, bringing it into the twenty first century. And as it was pointed out, sometimes you touch one thing and another thing gets involved. Bring it to your point, we began with reviewing uh Martha Callahan's report. Which I thought was very well done and the observations regarding the surface of the parking area. Absolutely spot on. So that's how we kind of segwayed into, well, what would be the impact of extending the parking area by approximately seven hundred and fifty square feet? That Mr. Faschino pointed out. And the word was permeability, not impermeability. And the word was permeability, not impermeability, and whether we might be able to address the value of the existing drainage if we make these adjustments, what could be done. So if that is an important point, there's opportunity to make adjustments elsewhere since the entire parking area is going to be part of this overall improvement. We're not going to put in a twenty-first century solar array and leave the parking area looking like a, a mess. So there's opportunity, if we're going to be milling, taking down the surface, to add permeability factors in other portions of the parking area, since we're going to be doing a new surface, as I understand it. There's opportunity because of the nature of the parking lot with crowns and drains, we can, we can make these improvements. Is it a specific detail that was planned for our application? No, but we're looking to accommodate and address issues. And this collective group has pointed out some good areas that we can give consideration to. So we're not changing our application at all, but we are certainly giving consideration to this. And if there's concern about the enforceability, that can be built into a draft. We, we are, we are here long-term. We are now looking to do something and run off. We, we will be here. We're already in the next generation. We are getting ready for the new, the new generation to take over. Watch this space in about twenty years. So whatever we can do to make this work is what we're looking to do.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Ed, and um you might have missed it, but I, I did say, and maybe before you were on that, of the five variances, this might have been how we got there. Um, I was comfortable with four, but a bit uncomfortable with that sort of, the, the fact that they were asking for a, their, and for impervious surface when I saw the opportunity to potentially make better than what there currently is today. So that was kind of how we got to that discussion. Um, I think what we're hearing from Mr. Lane and the applicant is openness to, to finding a solution, but we don't have a proposed solution to include in the language of the resolution, which is, I think, Ed, what you're looking for, because that makes it a lot cleaner um understandably. So that's sort of the context of where we are. Um, so if we're about, so, you know, but we are, you know, and I had said this, we are tasked to evaluate the application as it, you know, as it stands, was presented and was shared before us. Um, there are the five variances and there are a number of waiver requests. I don't know how many there are, but we talked about, well, we had the EIS waiver request. Was that the only one that we had to include?
Two, I think uh Graham's report, Mr. Peddles' report um outlined uh the variances and, and the waivers, and I believe the, the waivers related to the parking space size um and the lighting uh failure to meet the uh-
Right, that's right.
The overall park, uh the overall lighting standard. Those were, I believe, the two. And uh, I believe the-
And we heard that.
Had said that um there'll be a two-foot overhang. Uh, so the spaces, if I understood the testimony, is, are going to be nine feet by seventeen feet but with a two-foot overhang that would allow effectively nineteen feet or potentially nineteen feet of parking. Uh, I think those were the two waivers. Graham, are, are there any others that I, I missed? I think those are the two pointed out.
Yeah, that's correct. The lighting is technically two. It's for the average uh foot handles and then the max to men.
So given where the application stands right now, does anybody want to make a motion on granting the application with the five variances and three waivers as noted?
I will make that motion.
To approve the application? Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody who wants to second that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Dan.
Yes, John Halper?
Yes.
Mark Mattsall?
Yes, but I, I also um noted that I, I would like um the follow-up to the questions several of us had that were relevant to the application.
Yes?
Yeah, yes, I said yes, but I would like follow-up to the questions that were asked about, you know, additional EV stations and um doing um and looking at geotechnical soil engineering to basically help mobilize the slopes, which is part of the application. You know, they had a retaining wall. It's very relevant. Thank you.
Maggie Megan?
Yes.
Su Jafa Sean?
No, I'd say yes with the holding off on just the impervi- additional impervious surface part.
I, I, how do I do that? The application is the application.
Yeah, yeah, it's a yes or no at this point. Vote yes, no for everybody. Yeah.
Diana Agwell?
Yes.
Deborah Neves?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Thank you. Um, so congratulations to the applicants, Mr. Lane. I think, you know, you, you heard from us um some hesitation. Um, so, you know, I, I believe that, uh, you know, your applicant is owners in the town. We trust that you're for being good neighbors and want to continue to serve our town well. Um, and we have the space. Um, so we do hope that you will uh hear our concerns and continue to work with our engineer and follow up with us in good faith.
A- absolutely. We, we literally live here too. So we have all common, all common interests, and we look forward to future applications to bring other properties into the twenty-first century and, and beyond. We have the next generation of owners coming up. And they're bright, they're really smart kids. So we're looking forward to uh making this work. And we look forward to when it's all finished, uh maybe we can have an opening, whatever that would be. Everybody bring their electric car. But thank you this evening for everyone. Uh, it's late, so I won't speak anymore. But thank you again.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Bart Sheen over. Who I'm sure wants to.
I think Beth is reconnecting.
Yes, she is.
She doesn't, she doesn't make it back on. I think we're looking to carry the application. What would be, what would be the situation uh I, since we're at ten thirty?
Um, our next agenda, our next meeting is March sixteenth. There are no applications scheduled. There are two ordinances that we're going to be reviewing for consistency with the master plan, so that would be my-
All right, well, I would go with their recommendation, but let's, let's-
Yeah.
Sheen on, see if he would uh-
Yeah, Eileen, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, um. Okay, I'm, I'm not sure.
We can't see you, but we can hear you, Mr. Sheen.
There you go. So uh this application is uh extremely time-sensitive for a number of reasons. And uh the applicant uh would appear on March sixteenth. Uh, I am out of town on that date, so I would have substitute counsel stand in for me if the board would be willing. Uh, I would like to open tonight uh for the purpose of establishing the preferred method of proceeding on this application with the board, so that when it meets on the sixteenth, it will have uh given specific instructions as to whether or not my method of proceeding is acceptable or not. It will take me no more than ten minutes.
I just brought Beth over.
Yeah, Beth's coming back over. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna put that back on the chair. Thank you for the opportunity to lead the pit, the planning board for- That's all yours.
Oh, thank you. My, my computer decided it was time for me to go to bed. Um, I, I did hear that uh Mr. Sheen, your plea for ten minutes of our time, and I think I'm willing to give ten minutes, but not a whole lot more. I, I want to be cognizant. I know we made you wait, so I will give you that.
It will not take more than that.
Please begin.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, I am Bartholomew A. Sheehan Jr. appearing on behalf of the firm of Dempsey, Dempsey and Sheehan on behalf of Beehive, the applicant with respect to three ninety-seven Milburn Avenue. The applicant seeks to amend the previously approved preliminary and final site plan, which was memorialized in a resolution by the Milburn Township Planning Board on March thirty-first. The original application proposed the construction of a mixed-use building consisting of a ground-level parking garage with ninety-seven parking spaces and access from both Spring Street and Milburn Avenue, three thousand square feet of ground-floor retail space, fronting on Milburn Avenue, and fifty-three rental apartment units, forty-five market rate units, and eight affordable units located on the second and third floors above the parking structure, together with a second-floor residential rooftop courtyard. After careful reflection, the applicant has determined to propose an amendment to that prior approval, which is believed to serve site access, loading, refuse, and recycling management and removal in a manner that is more functionally appropriate and aesthetically desirable. Additionally, as the project moved from the design build to the construction drawing stage, certain interior modifications, including the slight change in unit bedrooms, realignment of the interior parking spaces, and the addition of six interior balconies were deemed by the applicant to advance the desired plan and are included in the amendment. Since the prior application was exhaustively summarized in the approving resolution, which has been attached to the amended application, the presentation of this matter does not propose to represent the details of the prior approval, but will rather focus on the proposed amendments, highlighting any changes that are proposed to that prior approval. Is that an acceptable modus operandi for the presentation of this application for the board, Madam Chair?
Yes, I think it's not only acceptable, it's preferable. So, thank you.
All right, the, the only variance relief requested is for an additional sign, which was the subject of prior relief summarized in paragraph twelve of the prior resolution. Relief from the um location, size, and space, uh and the absence of an apron for the loading area, uh which again was an issue of concern in the prior resolution. And in fulfillment of the representation captured in paragraph twenty-one, the application uh amending the prior approval seeks approval for six interior balconies, which do not meet the standard under the applicable ordinance. There will be four witnesses. Mark Jaeger will testify on behalf of the applicant. Michael Lonza Fama will testify as a professional engineer and planner. Stuart Johnson of Minow and Wosco will provide architectural testimony. Because of the nature of the administrative reviews, it is the intention of the applicant to have a traffic engineer present, but not to present directly, given the nature of the relief that is requested. Uh, with that, if there are any questions, I'd be prepared to answer them at this point. If not, the application will proceed with the testimony of Mark Jaeger beginning early on the sixteenth of March, and hopefully the application and matter will conclude on that night.
Thank you, Mr. Sheen. I appreciate the overview and the introduction. And do you know who will be representing in your bed?
Well, it will either be uh James Weber or Hillary Sonjak. I'm sorry, Hillary Halls.
Wonderful. Okay, that's wonderful. And you'll obviously coordinate that with Eileen as appropriate, um just to make sure we know who we're expecting. Um, again, I apologize that we weren't able to get through the previous application and get to yours. I know you had to renotice, cognizant of that. Um, and we look forward to hearing the full application on the sixteenth.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, you should make, you, you should make an announcement um about the application, so it's on the record, so there'll be no-
I should. For the record, I should state that this application will be carried to March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven thirty PM via Zoom. And there is no requirement of further notice.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, is there anything further we need to do tonight, counsel?
Uh, no, not, not, uh, not from my perspective. Thank you.
Great, thank you. In which case, I make a motion to adjourn. Anybody like to second?
Second.
Thanks, Mark. All in favor? Okay, we'll see you all in two weeks. Thank you so much.